If you called in on this number. Oh, okay. They might have to do the normal business. Roll call, you know, that kind of crap at a public meeting. I don't know why they don't let us in. Oh, okay.
Hi, this is Rachel. I've been able to hear a couple people, but nobody else. I just want to make sure that everything's working for the meeting to begin.
This is Richard Briggs. I'm on the meeting.
Okay, I hear you, Rick.
This is Ron. I'm on.
I haven't heard anybody from the committee yet, six minutes after, so I just want to make sure.
Well, Rachel, I think they were, I think they were doing their opening commission, planning commission business, and then they get to the detailed stuff, I think.
Okay, all right, thank you.
This is Ronnie Hardaway. I believe that they are experiencing an audio problem. I've sent them a message saying that we can't hear any audio. They normally turn on the audio at the very beginning of the meeting. As soon as the recording has started, it normally, it's, it's, the audio is also turned on. I think there's just a, a technical glitch at the moment.
Are we all still waiting?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, can people hear us now?
Yes.
Oh, hey, there we go. Mike, Mike clicked some buttons in the circuit breaker room and.
I just started clicking buttons back. Lights went on and off and everything.
You fix everything at home, right?
All right, everybody can hear us, okay?
So, I was gonna say, so everyone online can still hear us, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, I will just recap then, and I'll give folks a chance. We skipped over the approval of minutes because we don't have them. Is there anyone online who wanted to speak or make a public comment for something that wasn't already on the agenda?
Okay, we're going to skip over the continuation for the public hearing for the Maguire Chevy Cadillac site improvements because nobody is here from there yet. So, we will go on to the continuation for the public hearing for special permit number two zero two two dash forty five seventy six. Richard Briggs, representing the Brixmore Property Group, is proposing to remodel the former Party City section of the Keogah Mall located twenty three oh nine North Trippamara Road into the Tompkins County VA outpatient clinic. I knew, Richard, you couldn't make it to the last meeting, so we're glad that you can be here. I think he's on, you see on the phone, he said, so that you can be here with us today. So, yeah, did you want to start, Mike?
Basically, Rick, you can hear us, right?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Why don't you go ahead and give the planning board like a overview of what you guys are doing there, and that'll ask, make some questions.
Basically, the, the project is to take the old Party City store and part of what was a pharmacy. There will be one vacant space left for the Brixmore property when we're done to the right of this space, but will be approximately seventeen thousand seven hundred square feet of space that will be constructed into the new outpatient Tompkins County VA clinic. The clinic is put out for bid by the Veterans Administration. It was awarded at bid to Valor Healthcare, and Valor Healthcare is contracting with Lutz, Briggs, Schultz and Associates, who I'm the owner of, to do the construction and the design of the project. So, we've worked with Valor on numerous projects over the years, and they asked me to kind of get in front of this one because we had sewer issues and we had electric issues and other things to determine how we get them done. So, then I was the one that made the application for this hearing for the special use. Speaking with Mike Scott, Mike's been great. I appreciate working with Mike. He explained to me why we fell into the category of needing a special permit, and we have filled out a drawing for you guys to show you the parking that's in front of what was the old Party City store that will be required by the Valor VA. And I don't have the drawings in front of me. I'm traveling back from Virginia right now, but I think there's notes on that drawing that show how many caregivers, doctors will be on staff at the clinic, and how many staff is on clinic, and those people are not all there every day at the same time, so it's probably a little bit heavy in calculation, but even at that, they needed less parking for the VA clinic that was required under your code for parking when it was Party City. So, the parking requirement, I think we're fine. We've, we've met. There was a number of other questions, and I do apologize for missing the last meeting. I had some personal issues came up, and I just wasn't able to get on. Basically, I think I've answered those questions with Mike. I sent him a letter from Valor, and the Valor people were on here on this call as well, so they can better answer questions you might have about clinic operations, which I may or may not be able to totally answer properly. The pharmacist question, we sent you a, a write-up from Valor explaining the duties of the pharmacist and what they do on site, because it's not like a, a normal pharmacy where the veterans come in and, and fill prescriptions. I mean, their, their prescriptions are either mailed to them by the VA, or they pick their prescriptions up at their normal pharmacy, but they see a pharmacist there who consults with them that looks at the medications they're on to make sure that they are all properly, you know, looked at. So, they work with them. So, that's, that's more of the duties of the pharmacy, but there is a letter explaining that, and the Valor people can explain it a little better if you have further questions on that.
Okay, some of the, just in case, what we're talking about is, is I, as I sent an email to Rick, and he sent some back. I basically sent him some questions that you were concerned about at the last meeting, and Rick's been great as far as getting me the information I need on things. He did send you a parking lot layout, which you have, and also Brett Cross. We've got you. Rick sent you what calculations he believes that the, the new tenant, also the clinic, what their estimated gallons per day use is. Is that satisfactory to you?
Well, are you re- referring to the item number three in the communication between you and, and Rick?
Yes, I am.
I guess I would just like to better understand the, the derivative of the, of the three hundred, the five hundred and thirty-five gallons that, without context, it, you know, it's hard to say what that sounds like.
I know when I spoke to my partners, Richard Schultz of Lutz, Briggs, Schultz, basically looked at the amount of clients that would go through the clinic on a daily basis. We looked at the fixtures that were there. Not knowing exactly, we had to take an average a number of times that a toilet would be flushed, an average number of times the doctors washed their hands. It, it's not real easy to calculate exactly, but he tried to do that based on other clinics that we've done and the water use, and that's what he came up with, but I'd have to get him to do further somehow breakdown for you. I don't really know how much more we can give you, though.
Well, what you just said would be helpful to have what you just said as the spring background to that. So, you know, for now, I guess I would say let's, let's go with that. So, the, the equivalency of what you've shown is that the hundred gallons per day for the retail space would be the equivalent of one sewer unit, and then the five hundred and thirty-five gallons per day for the clinic would be the equivalent of three units. And so, I think we could look in the records from Bolton Point as to what the previous retail space was consuming, and then there may, let's just say, for instance, the, the previous retail space was consuming two units a day, then the, this predicted consumption would necessitate the purchase of two additional sewer units from the village to, to provide the, the capacity.
Okay, Brett, so we'll, we'll end up having to work that out to find that information either from Jody or right from Bolton Point.
Yeah, right.
And I don't know, we've also got Mark Newman on here, and Mark is, represents Brixmore. I appreciate you coming, Mark. The planning board did ask if you could stop by to ask you maybe a few questions, but possibly you could provide that for us if possible. I mean.
Well, I'm, I'm actually texting right now our property manager, and thank, thank you for having me. I'm glad to be here to see if she knows how much, how, how much water and sewer capacity Party City was using. I, I think, and, and if I'm correct, and I guess I wasn't aware of this component of the special use permit, but is the, it, it, when, when you're taking a look at the previous use and considering the replacement use, both, both for special use purposes, because this is a special use permit, as I understand it, and, and a change of use. When you're looking at that, are you, are you taking a look at sewer and water capacity? Is that, is that in the purview, like, was, is the planning board review that, or is that something that's reviewed by the town engineer in the process of submitting construction documents for, for building out the space for the specific use?
So, so I think you're referring to the question of, is this a mechanical engineering question of fixture units, sizing of piping and that type of thing, and the answer is no. This has to do with the, the Village of Lansing's availability of sewage treatment capacity at the Village of Keogah Heights wastewater treatment plant. And so, it, it, I believe that the answer is, is relevant, or it is the purview of the planning board to make sure that the, the relationship between the new occupancy and the, the Village of Keogah Heights treatment capacity is taken into consideration.
Okay. Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have an answer readily available about the sewer capacity of the, you know, the sewer and water capacity of the previous tenant. I, I think we would probably have to take a half a step back and look at the overall usage at our property and see what's on, you know.
That, that would be a fair and reasonable thing to do, is just look at it as a whole. I mean, that probably is something that could, should be done on an occasional basis anyway, so I don't foresee any of this to be any kind of deal breaker. It's just a matter of, you know, documentation, and if, like, the example I gave, just as, as a scenario is if the, if the Party City was using, no, do they have their own wa- water meter, or do you, as the Brixmore, have a, a master meter, and then you have to submeter it to?
It's, it's typically master metered with submeters.
Yeah, so some level of, you know, documentation of if you can see what, that you had been billing, somehow that you must bill to your tenants either on some kind of either quarterly or annual kind of tenant.
We can get that.
Yeah, and then just compare it, and, and like I said, if for some reason the past consumption was the equivalent of two units, you would possibly need to buy one or two more depending on, you know, I guess, I guess a separate question maybe for Mike Scott is, do we, can we, will, will we be contemplating the retail space as part of this approval, or is that just additional information that we'll get addressed in the future?
I, I have a question about the retail. So, the retail space is, is Brixmore's retail space, not the VA's retail space, right? Or is?
Brixmore would still own it, obviously.
Yeah, but I, I was confused why it's, if it's not part of this, why it's the plan.
Mark, the, the extra space, or whether Rick can answer this, the extra space that's within the VA clinic, is that, is that subletted by the VA clinic, or is Brixmore?
No, and, and I don't want to speak out of turn here. I'm, I'm not as familiar with some of the details of the VA clinic floor plan or their specific use of the space. My understanding of it is that it's, when, when they're referring to retail, they're referring to the, I believe, the adjacent space that's not part of their lease. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. Okay.
Okay, right, so, so there's, you know, with the twenty thousand square foot, twenty thousand plus square foot space, the VA clinic is taking seventeen thousand six hundred square feet. I think there's remaining three thousand one hundred and sixty-eight square feet of space that is vacant. There's not a lease for it right now or marketing it, and hopefully bringing in a low water needs user.
So, it's not theirs. It's just that this is just shown because part of the rear part of it.
Here's the Party City building. Here's the part the VA clinic's gonna use.
The future tenant space we're not looking at, right?
Okay. Right.
So, that would just mean.
No, but this is.
To the sewer calculation.
This is Richard Briggs. I just know that when we were looking at this whole project in a whole, and how it would affect the city, we felt it was fair to say there's going to be another tenant in that space.
Thank you.
And most likely, it would be retail, and it would probably be two toilets, two sinks, a slop sink and a drinking fountain, and that's the calculation we use.
I think that's fair.
What use would be in that space.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and so, that's good, good information to be aware of, but it sounds like we don't have to necessarily kind of condition upon this project for future sewer units. You'll just be dealing with the, the units associated with the five hundred and thirty-five gallons per day, which would round out to three units. And so, in that example, if there was, Party City was using two units, then you would have to purchase one more sewer, or whatever the math.
So, and, and.
Okay, are, are those, are those additional units available?
Well, the answer is on, on a very low volume basis. I don't think that there's any current concern about that. There is, there has been discussion, and there's going to be a meeting coming later this week to talk about units on a much bigger scale, but for what we're calling the onesie twosies, there's no, there's no real concern about that.
Are, are, do you look at this, at the units per, per user, or do you, or does the center have a certain number of units allocated or previously owned?
Well, the, it, it can be looked at either way, and we're certainly willing to take that into consideration. It, like I said, though, you'd have to have some kind of his, history for us to look, to be able to.
I can, I can get that. I can find that.
Sure.
And, and as, and as Brett said, that, that this is not something that is a deal breaker. This is something that would be handled in the building permit process.
Okay.
So, because I was.
Another question, and another question I have. This is Richard Briggs again. If that additional E D U is available, at what cost are they?
Just saying, how much are they? What does it cost? What's a sewer unit cost?
Sewer units are twenty-two hundred dollars now.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
So, this, because I was gonna ask whether this whole, when, when Mr. Newman was saying about looking comprehensively at the whole property, so it's, the sewer units are not like our planned sign area. It's like not a planned sewer area. Okay, I see, but, all right, interesting, okay. Just to know. All right.
Um, okay, are there other questions from board members?
Um, well, we had some questions that came up from our mayor, and I was interested in knowing the answers myself, just for future use, because it seems that a trend is that we're getting more medical, I mean, it's a nationwide trend, that medical facilities are taking mall space, which is a good thing in many, many ways, but it does impact the tax rolls, I think, in most cases. So, it would be good for, I would like to have an understanding of how that works. Now, in the case of Keogah Medical, they actually own their property. This is a rental property, which made me think, oh, how does that one work now? So, I was wondering if you could help us with that, either Mr. Newman or Mr. Briggs, and some, we could just go down these questions that our mayor did have, and that wasn't necessarily one of them, but it was certainly related.
So, is the, is the question, how, how, how do they, me make sure that I understand the question?
Well, yeah, it was, I was gonna say, what, the question is basically, this is a, a not for, this is a governmental entity, correct? Isn't it? Is that correct?
Just a for-profit or a non-for-profit?
Valor is a for-profit company.
Oh, Valor is a for-profit. Valor's constructing it, though. But so, when it's, but it's a clinic, so will, will this, will it, will, basically, the question was, will it be removed? Is it a not-for-profit or a for-profit organization, and will it be removed from the village and county tax rolls, was the question?
This is Harold Smith from Valor. It is a private enterprise. It will not be removed from the tax forms. We pay state and local taxes.
Okay. So, you have to ask the question because you can't tell.
I'm, I'm glad that you asked it. I think it's a fair question.
And then the, so, is this facility a federally designated or licensed Veterans Administration outpatient clinic? I guess it's the latter. Is that what you're saying?
The latter, yes.
Okay, but you are allowed to call it the, of the VA Tompkins County outpatient clinic?
We are required to call it that with our contract with the VA.
Okay. Now, do we have a two thirty-nine on this? We must not.
For this, we do not have to have a two thirty-nine because there's no change.
In the year.
It's commercial, it's a commercial use with no change in building area.
Okay, so the question, one of the question was, has the Tompkins County Health Department been alerted about this clinic? I'm not, why?
Is, is that something that Valor does, or is that something that the actual VA clinic itself would do, the people who handle that? Does anyone know that? As far as contacting the Tompkins County Health Department?
I'm, I'm waiting for somebody from the VA to speak up as to whether that's a requirement that the VA is required to notify. I certainly would imagine that the applicant is going to be pursuing whatever Board of Health approvals they're required to, and I, I can't speak for them, but I would imagine that to the extent that that's required before they can open and have a license, then they're absolutely going to be notifying.
We notify the state for our CLIA license, so we can run our lab, so we get a certificate from the New York Health Department to have our lab open.
But not the county necessarily?
No.
Is that correct? Does the, does the state, probably. Valor should know the answer to that.
If there is a, if there is a local requirement to engage with the Board of Health, we certainly can do that. It wouldn't be the VA. It would be us acting on behalf of the VA. And if there is a requirement to do that, we certainly can do that. We, we are joint mission certified, and so I don't, I don't think there's a problem with us doing that if that's a requirement.
Do you like to see that?
Yeah, I think, I, I just think that of almost common courtesy, just to let them know of the existence, and I would think that would be kind of helpful for them to know.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think the, I think the stance of the board is that, yeah, we would request that you reach out to the, the Tompkins County Board of Health and, and just, you know, let us, let us, let us know that you've done that, or, you know.
Yeah.
In writing, and just say, yes, we've reached out to them.
Because I would think that they may want to refer people over. Yeah.
Harold, is this replacing the one that's up on Route thirteen towards Dryden?
Harold?
Rachel, Harold, is this a replacement of the existing clinic that's up the road? I think, yes.
I, I, I don't know the address of the existing clinic, quite honestly. I, that, that clinic has nomenclature gone by Cortland as opposed to Tompkins previously, but I, my, my thought is ninety-nine point nine percent, the answer is yes.
Okay.
When, when the, when the new clinic, when the new clinic is built, all of the people that are in the existing clinic would transition over to the new clinic, and some of the equipment maybe, but for the most part, probably it would be all new furniture, all new equipment, everything for a new clinic.
Is that all the questions? I think that's all.
Do you want to talk about the park?
Oh, yeah, well, that was, I just wanted to be sure, because I was interested in knowing myself how this works. Okay, so, on to our. on to our building, right?
Well, we had discussed at the last meeting about the flag pole.
Yes, the flag pole.
Okay.
Okay.
And Natalie had sent us, what are they, state or they federal?
State, federal, as it applies to this.
Uh, what can, what can, what is required?
For lighting and displaying of the flag.
For displaying the flag. Within the village, we have height limitations. Um, and as it looks with this flag pole, you're well above that thirty-five feet for the height limitations. Am I, am I right on that, Rick?
Yes, we would typically put a fifty-foot flag pole in all these facilities.
Our code is specific.
The flag pole, if you look at Village Code, is classified, is going to be classified as a principal building, only because it doesn't meet the requirements of accessory building. So thirty-five foot height is going to be the maximum for that. So in order to have a flag pole that would be fifty feet, you would end up having to get some type of variance for the, for the B Z A. On top of that, if you are like that at the top, you would need another variance for the lighting law of twenty-five feet for the maximum height. So I'm not saying that that's going to be impossible to do, or difficult to do, or whatnot. I'm just saying it has to be done one way or another. Now, you don't have to necessarily uh, reject the special permit for it. It can be part of a condition.
Well, I was gonna say, I looked at the code too, and I'm thinking, we just have never gone above thirty-five feet for church spire. It's all, it's right there. It's all of it. Church steeples all of it. So I feel pretty strongly that we should stay within the thirty-five feet. Now, maybe the B Z A would disagree, but yeah, and as for the lighting, any lighting has to be dark sky compliant with our code, our, our lighting commission, so it would have to be downward facing in some way. That would be, you know, there's a lot of, I've seen that done.
And, and our, our new code requires maximum twenty-five foot high.
Okay.
I don't, I think there's two spotlights on the front.
Yeah, this was two spotlights shining out, I think
Those are.
But, but the fact is, just shining out, the whole traffic glare thing gets to be problematic. So I think that we have to have a couple of things done about the flag pole. One, we have, we have to have an exterior lighting plan anyway, and this would be part of that. And then, I don't know, um but yeah, that was one of the, my main concerns when, when I first looked at these plans. Because as usual, it's like, we kind of get into the exterior things. You guys getting to the interior things. But the other, then also, in addition to the flag pole, was, I don't know where, where we're at with, this is part of a planned sign area, I think.
It all has a planned sign area.
And so, um, I know that in the past, we have had some variation from that with, depending on how big the facade is, because sometimes what is allowed by the planned sign area really would be out of, it just would be ridiculous, too small for the size of the facade. So we do have to look at the signage as well once that gets in place. And then, um, the parking lot was why I think we made the request to have Mr. Newman come.
What was, I'm sorry, the parking?
Pardon me?
That you said the, the parking?
Parking lot, in general, because so much is going on over there with uh, both this property and next door, the Aldi property.
Yeah, the, the space next door that's being taken by Aldi?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so this parking lot, I do go over there for various and sundry things, and as a user, it's pretty darn dangerous, frankly. Because, and since the Aldi comes, you know, construction has been going on, it's been wonderful, because it's only about three stores long before people, you know, can't cut through and go around, and people are safer crossing to the stores from the parking out front, if you know what I mean?
Um, no, I'm, if you could, could you just try to explain that to me again? When you say there's a dangerous condition there, do you mean dangerous condition because there's, because there's not enough stop signs, or?
Oh, no, there's, actually, there's two, well, that's another matter. Some of them do get taken out, but there are almost too many stop signs, which they're needed because of the access to the stores, but as a result, because there are so many of them, people do not stop. And so, the fact that now it is blocked off, so when you come in, you go along the front of all of the stores, correct?
Yeah.
And then you go down by builder's best, you turn, you know, have a ninety-degree turn. Well, that whole straightaway, people just do their thing. And now that it's blocked off at the Aldi, they can only go the three stores. You know that they're going to those first three stores, and that's all they're doing. The other people are now going down to the bottom.
They're going around.
Around and coming back up.
They're going past the old Pizza Hut, as opposed to driving across the facade of all the stores.
And they're, right, they're going around because they're blocked by the construction activity.
And honestly, it is kind of, I'm thinking, you know, this is pretty good. It is really, it's easier to drive it, too. As a matter of fact, if you're one of the parkers going to those stores, because before you're watching for all these other cars that are coming. And I'm wondering if we could look at the design a little bit and possibly put some, since it's torn up anyway, something coming down perpendicular to the storefronts every so often to block off, so that people just don't go through there.
Well, so when you say perpendicular to the storefronts, you mean along that driveway coming in off of the entrance that's being blocked right now by the construction?
Yes.
It's, your thinking is that maybe a couple more roadblocks, similar to the one that's there now because of construction?
Yeah.
I, we could look at, we certainly could take a look at it.
You know, I think because of, especially when I look at the VA clinic, which is going to have some people that are going to be in wheelchairs and things, I'm suspecting, it may be about time to do that right past there.
I, I think we could take a look at that, and we certainly could have, you know, we, we could, um, take a look at some, some, you know, possible, sometimes you can put, um, you know, you could, you could, you could put speed bumps in the driveway, which, which help out a lot.
Okay.
I mean, if, if, I, I wouldn't want to do what I would call like a, a, a full-on obstruction, because we got in a lot of the leases, there's language that requires us to keep the uh, existing access as it is, and not, you know, not affect access to the stores. That would be a violation of, of probably all of the major, you know, retail leases, like, like, and, and Planet Fitness, Big Lots, Advance Auto, all those tenants, I'm guessing, have language that says you can't do anything that interferes with access to their stores. So when you start blocking roads, you start violating leases, and it's, it's I, I'm, I'm thinking that that's probably not a solution that would work, but I think that there are some other ones that we could look at. I think we certainly could take a look and uh, consider what, what you're explaining now is a rather ineffective um, system of stop signs. I, I guess I would ask that we be allowed to, I, I think it's something we'd be willing to look at. I, I was wondering if there's a way that we could uncouple it, so to speak, from the, from this special use permit.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely, no, it was just that when we started looking at it, I said, gee, you know, as I'm going over there, now we have two buildings that are going to be disturbing the parking lot. Maybe we should be looking at the parking lot design, because I honestly, as a user of that area, feel it needs help.
Yeah, it, it's very good input. I, I am very happy to discuss this with our property manager, who I've just been texting with. And she loves feedback like this, because she often has, you know, my, you know, sort of smaller, what we call Op X budgets, where, you know, it's sometimes it's just small items that she might be able to add to the center that could improve the user experience, such as, you know, revisiting where the stop signs are located, and looking at speed bumps and things like that, revisiting sort of the, the, you know, what we might be able to do on, on a, on a more small scale. That's something she would definitely be able to take a look at.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I know Ronnie, Ronnie has had his hand up, so Ronnie, go ahead.
Does he?
Yeah.
Thank you, it took me a second to, to come up with me. There, there is an additional issue. This is totally not related to the planning board. It's not related to the permit necessarily. But I believe that the county, Tompkins County, will want the name changed to something like uh, VA, uh, Community-Based Outpatient Center of Tompkins County, rather than Tompkins County Community-Based Outpatient Center, because that would give uh, it could possibly give the impression that Tompkins County is responsible for the clinic.
No, uh, in actual fact, the way the sign's supposed to read is um, uh, Tompkins County VA Community-Based Outpatient Clinic.
Okay, I, I, it's, that's still problematic, because it sounds like uh, to the casual
This isn't right.
customer, customer, client, or patient, that it's owned and managed by Tompkins County. And I believe that there might be an issue with that. It's, it's just a heads up.
So who does?
Well, it's my understanding from what Harold said previously, that her, your license with the VA clinic, it has to be worded that way. Is that right, Harold?
That's the way they've asked us to word it, yes.
So I, 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 I think, again, when you reach out to the county, maybe let them know that, you know,
From the VA.
Yeah, let them know what, what the, what your license from the VA says, and if they have a comment on that, they'll, they'll obviously comment back.
Yeah, it's something that might have to be worked out between the VA and the county.
Yeah.
That's fine, we, we can certainly do that. That's, that's, and it's not an unusual comment, actually.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, we've done it before. We can do it again.
All right, I just wanted to give you an early heads up.
Very good, thank you.
So the name that's on the drawings, the Tompkins County Outpatient Clinic, is not the name?
No, it actually would read VA Tompkins County Community-Based Outpatient Clinic. That would be what the act, the sign would look like on the outside of the building.
I foresee the planned, planned sign area amount is going to be exceeded.
If, if
Wow, okay.
If, if, if there is a, if there is a concern with, with the county officials, we certainly can work with them and the VA to address that. And we
We'll stay out of it.
I don't blame you. I don't blame you.
And we'll wait until you come up with the final sign for us.
It's gotta be a good acronym for that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, CC.
Um, okay, other comments from anyone on the board?
No, I don't think so.
Jim? Uh, Brent?
Yeah, just to pick up a little bit on um, Lisa's request or suggestion kind of, uh, limiting the traffic along the front. I think that I would agree in that from a traffic stand, uh, perspective, that would be a good thing. But I would also not want to, or I would want to make sure we engage the, the fire department, because they a feeling about that, too.
Yeah, fire access.
Yeah.
So as a planning board, you're going to want to see what the actual sign is going to look like, the dimensions and everything.
Yeah.
Similar to what we've done with other, um, parts of that mall. Um, and then you'd also want some type of lighting schedule and layout. Now, the sign is something that we'll, we can look at, but like I said, either the sign issue, or if there is a lighting issue, can all be handled in the conditions, or but we still, the planning board would still like to see that, so.
Yes.
Okay. So Rick and Harold, I guess what the planning board is asking is, uh, give us the sign information, so I can make sure in the Village Code for signs and with the planned sign area, and can you also get us some type of lighting schedule for uh, your light set will be on the facade? Um, also, the lighting that would be on the flag pole, and any other new lighting that would be in the parking lot?
Also, um, I know that when we did one other building, we forgot the, the lights in the back of the building and the back parking lot. So just any exterior lighting.
Okay, so if I understand what you're asking, what you've asked for is a uh, diagram to provide you the exterior lighting, both front and back of the facility, and also a rendering of what the sign would look like and the dimensions that go with it. Is that correct?
That's correct, and with the lighting schedule, your, your breakdown, your schematics of the lights that you're using. And what I, what I'll do is both you, Harold, and Rick, I can send you the Village Code, which describes all of this, so it's easier for you to, you know, you're not, you're not
Stepless, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great. That would be great to have.
Okay, this is Rick Briggs. Speaking as a builder, and we've built a lot of these facilities, the signage is always done by Valor and a sign company, where they make the drawings and submit to the city. We put something on the drawing that's, you know, a quick representation of what's going to go on the front of what we've done in past clinics. That's not written in stone. We don't really know what the VA is requiring. Sometimes they do a box sign. Some landlords require individual letter signs, but that's all done by a sign company, who's actually going to be hired by Valor to construct and put that sign up.
Correct.
That's why, that's where that, now, as far as outside lighting of the building, um, Brickmore actually has a drawing where they're rebuilding that front canopy facade, and any exterior lighting is usually done by the landlord. We don't have anything in our plan to light the front of the building that I know of. The sign light, or the flagpole light that we were proposing, which you're saying isn't any good, usually we put a light on the building that shines up at a flag that's fifty-foot high, so it doesn't really cause a problem with cars or anything shining up. So that's why we've done it that way. Um, but you're saying, so your ordinance of thirty-five foot high is a building ordinance? Are you, are you keeping that for a flag pole and a light pole and anything else? So everything's got to be thirty-five?
Correct, unless you get a variance, right? And, and in regards to the, in regards to the lights shining up, um,
Yeah.
here, we've got a light ordinance, so we have, everything here has to be dark sky compliant, so you can't just have light shining up, right? They have to be shining down to illuminate objects.
And actually
Okay, what about, what about a flag light that's, that's mounted, a deck light that shines straight up at the sign?
Yeah, it would be the same thing. You'd have to have something, I mean, depending on
Top of the
Right, not knowing exactly what the design's going to be like, but you would have to have something on top of the pole, shining down to illuminate the flag.
Yeah.
And they have those, I just, yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we've used those in, in the past at other facilities, so it shouldn't, it won't be a problem.
Yeah.
Um, and just, I, I think for Mr. Newman, too, is since some of the other, I don't know how long you've been with Bricksmore, maybe forever, but when they did, um, when we've done some of the previous renovations, I don't know if we had our lighting ordinance in effect at the time, but we do have a new lighting ordinance, so just be aware of that.
Okay.
And I, I don't think it's anything different than we requested in the past, but it is now an ordinance, as of
Okay, I think, yeah, when we did the, uh, new facade over by Planet Fitness, Dollar Tree, and, and Big Lots on that.
It was, I guess maybe it was then.
Yeah.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, I think, um, I know we're proposing a new facade for, uh, in front of the VA clinic. I think we're doing a, a limited facade renovation, and I believe Aldi is doing a facade renovation of the, uh, of the, you know, portion of storefront in, in front of their space.
Okay.
I think it's going to look incredible.
No, it's starting to, no, the mall's looking good.
So I guess while I have the Valor people on the phone at this hearing, are we just changing to a thirty-five-foot pole, and we're not going any further with requesting variance or anything? We're just changing the size?
The only thing that I didn't quite understand that Mike referred to, forgetting about the lighting, so the pole can't be taller than thirty-five, but the light can't be tall, as tall as that?
The light has, the new lighting, if it's new lighting, it can't be above twenty-five.
Okay, so
So you'd have to get a variance for that.
So a variance would have to be required for a light to be on top of the thirty-five foot?
Yes, I mean, a variant, like you said before, this could always be put into a condition if you had to, or whatnot.
Okay.
Permit, but if you are, if you do want Permit. But if you are, if you do want the way it is being presented right now, you would, it would require a variance.
Yes. Well, I don't think 50 feet is going to fly.
That leads to the next question. Is the total structure, including the light, limited to 35 feet? Or would it be a 35 foot pole and perhaps the lighting structure is a little bit higher than that?
No, 35.
The total is 35 feet, yeah.
That's, that's for
Including a top mounted light fixture, the total would be 35 feet. Is that, okay?
But usually they, they are kind of tuck and then they face down. Like you've seen it on signs, you know how they kind of
Well, that's what I assume too, but you know, you never know.
Let me, let me ask, let me ask our, our construction real estate director, Ron Turner is on the phone. He just spoke a moment ago. Ron, you said we've done this before. Obviously we ran into ordinances and variants, and variances that we weren't able to get. So 35 foot flagpole, that's the max height on the flagpole. Would the lights then be above that or at the top of that 35 looking down and the pole, I mean, the flag would be, say, a 33 or something? Is that what we're talking about?
I think so.
Yes. Yes, that's correct. We just do the flagpole at 35 with the light on top and then we shine down on the flag.
Well, my understanding, because I just, I think I just asked that question, was that the entire structure, my pole and the light could not
Yeah, that's the, the answer to the question, sir, as I understand what Mr. Turner just said, is that the total height of the pole to include light and flag would be no more than 35 feet.
Yeah.
Right.
But it still requires a variance because of the lighting ordinance.
Understand. Yes, ma'am.
So I guess we all finally understand.
And, and Mike would be able to walk you through that process. So really the, um, so what we're asking for, right, is you all have to make a decision on what you want to do with the light pole, having the new information here. But what we are really looking for is, you know, as part of that is the lighting schedule for really the entire area, the, the pole, the front of the building, the back of the building, and then also what your plan for the signs are. And you can get that, you can get that to Mike and he'll get that out to the rest of the board.
Okay. Okay, well, work with, we'll work with the, the landlord and Rick Briggs to come up with that for you.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions or comments from, oh, right, and also to, right, thank you Natalie, to, to reach out to, um, the Tompkins County Board of Health and just let us know the plan for it, the planned name and, you know, getting feedback from them and just, you know, provide Mike Scott, um, you know, whatever their response is back.
And then of course, the sewer, the, the water, the whole water sewer thing.
So we do have the short environmental. Oh, go ahead.
Well, I'm sorry, real quickly, I did, I was, I did get some feedback from our, our head property manager and she reports that because water meters were not consistently red or, or I believe that there's some sporadic history as to what our capacity is. Excuse me, at the center, we should be able to get the sub meter reading from Party City, which was the tenant before. We should be able to have some sense as to what the water sewer use was.
Okay. Great. So yeah, if you, if you can get that, provide that to Mike Scott also. Okay, so we do have the seeker for this. If we want to go over it tonight, if people are comfortable with that. Everybody should have a copy of it in front of them.
Yeah, everybody's looked at it, right?
Okay, so I will, I'll skip over the, the information at the beginning. Everybody knows, we'll, we'll read down through the questions. If you disagree with what they have filled out on the form, let me know.
Well, I was gonna say, at one point, we decided that we should all read this in advance and only bring up if there was. Do we want to still stick to that?
Has everyone had a chance to read? I don't know. Jim, did you have a chance to look?
No.
Okay, yeah, let's read, we, we Just read down through it.
Yeah, okay.
So does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a planned local law ordinance, administrative rule or regulation? No. Does the proposed action require a permit, approval or funding from any other government agency? No. So is that, even with the VA, that's all?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Hmm, we might need something from the county.
Because it's, it's, okay. Okay. Total acreage is there listed. I don't have to read that off. All land uses that occur on or adjoining or near the proposed action?
I was thinking, I was thinking maybe it should include residential, because in the back
There's the
There's those apartments on the other side of the fence there. I don't, it is adjacent.
Adjacent.
No, near, just don't care one way or the other.
Yeah.
Is that near?
Yeah.
No, but yeah, no.
VA or the county?
Not legally required.
Okay.
Right. Proposed action, are we going to use under the zoning regulations? Yes. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan? Yes. Is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape? Yes. Is the site of the proposed action located in or does it adjoin a state listed critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No. Are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? Yes. Are any pedestrian, pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the approved action? Yes. Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? Yes. Will a proposed action connect to an existing public or private water supply? Yes. Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? Yes. Does the site contain or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site or district, which is listed on the National or State Register of Historic Places? Or that has been determined by the commissioner, the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places? No. Is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as a sensitive or archaeological, sorry, sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York, New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory? No. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal or state or local agency? Yes. Would the, what piece is that, Mike?
Well, I was gonna say, there was a little explanation on the
Yeah, I know there's a, yeah.
Appropriate answer.
There's a small area, it's actually wetland.
Okay.
Okay. Would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into an existing wetland or water body? No.
But no, it says if yes, identify it and
Extent of alteration. So the alteration is a zero fee?
Zero, so would this should put zero?
So there is no, there's no alterations.
So it's not applicable? Is it, oh, that's to be, okay. Or not to be, huh?
Identify the typical habitat types that occur on or likely to be found on the project site. We've got urban listed. Anything else?
Suburban, I don't know. If, I suppose if we checked residential, it had a parent's called suburban. So what do you say, Natalie? I just now realized that. Sorry.
Does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government that's threatened or endangered? No. Is the project site located in the 100 year flood plan? No. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? No. Does the proposed action include construction or other activities that would result in the impoundment of water or other liquids? No. Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility? No. Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the subject of remediation for hazardous waste? No. There is the EAF map or summary report on the back there.
I would can go, I would be, it would be safe to go ahead and go through part two. And what I would do is I would ask if you got prepared to make these changes, just to make
Yeah, I would think I'd be like, I mean
You're good with that, Natalie?
Yes.
Um, so do we move on to part two? Okay, so I'll read, I'll read the questions off and answers to part two, if you have any comment on what I say. Let me know. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Will the proposed, sorry, no, or I'm just going to say no or small. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies? I would say no or small. Private-public wastewater treatment utilities? No or small. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of an important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Okay, so with all those answered, we can move on to the Village of Lansing Planning Board resolution for seeker review of special permit number until after this. You do this, then I can, yeah. Special permit number 2022-4576, so they get the number right, adopt on June, June 13th, 2022. So this matter involves consideration of the following proposed actions, special permit, the one I just read, for the proposal by Richard Briggs, representing the Bricksmore Property Group to remodel the former Party City tenant section of the Cayuga Mall, located at 2309 North Tripphammer Road into the Tompkins County VA outpatient clinic. Tax parcel number 46.1-5-4.2. So on June 13th, 2022, the Village of Lansing Planning Board, in performing the lead agency function for its independent and uncoordinated, it sounds so funny, uncoordinated environmental review, in accordance with Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law, seeker, determined that the proposed action provided for herein is an unlisted action in accordance with seeker, thoroughly reviewed the short environmental assessment form and any and all other documents prepared and submitted with respect to this proposed action and its environmental review, completed its thorough analysis of the potential relevant areas of environmental concern to determine if the proposed, proposed action may have a significant adverse impact on the environment, including the criteria identified in six, I'm not going to read the whole thing, and completed the short EAF. And now therefore be it resolved. So there's two options. Option one, we find that is a negative declaration and option two's, we find a positive declaration. So I will entertain a motion to find this a negative declaration.
I move that we find the seeker review for special permit number 2022-4576, a negative declaration, option one.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Jim. All in favor? Okay, and then, so motion carries. And then I go on to what I just had to do.
I got you here.
Okay, and so Mike's got the
You've checked off that it's, uh, the second checkup will be not a result of significant adverse impact. And you got it filled out, you excited? You are the seeker.
So the seeker is finished for this. And then so as soon as you get that information back to Mike, we'll have you back at the next meeting. We can go over that and we can move forward further.
Okay.
And thank you.
Okay, it sounds good.
I still don't see, is there anybody on from McGuire Chevy Cadillac?
Did they just snatch the date right?
Something everything, and I spoke with John last week.
Okay.
You've got their seeker, if you just don't have to do anything if you don't want.
Well, we can push it to the end. We've got another item to go over anyway, so maybe if he shows up. So the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for review of special permit number 3076. Carolyn Kilborn is proposing to construct a two-family house on SD Drive in a low-density residential district. Tax parcel number 43.1-1-4.3. Because the property includes land in the steep slope conservation combining district and in the unique natural area, special permit review is required pursuant to Section 145-48 of the Village of Lansing Code. The original special permit was approved by the Village of Lansing Planning Board on April 11th, 2016, and has since expired and requires a review for renewal. So I imagine folks remember this, this was
I do.
I think all of us, maybe except Pat, were here to go over this.
No.
You weren't here in 2016, okay. Okay. So, right, so this, and Mike can fill us all in, but there was a special permit. Folks came to discuss it for a few meetings and we did grant them a special permit. Like it says, it's, it's expired and they want to continue to move forward with that project and are seeking to extend the special permit.
And they also got the variance for the frontage, right? There was also a variance for the frontage.
Was that in there too?
There must have been.
Variance for frontage and for lot size, I think.
Oh, we'll, oh, for both. That was all.
That was for, there's, there's a lot of moving parts on this one because when Jeremy first came, they explained that, you know, at the last meeting in 2016, there was discussion that, you know, this project might not you know, the next year or whatnot.
Right.
And, and it shows that there's obviously some thought about that because in the village code, a special permit will last three years until it has to be reviewed anyway. But in the condition of the resolution, it was also put in. So it was obviously, it was a subject that was brought up. Since then, I have spoken with both Jeremy and Carolyn and then also Alexander who's here. He's the, he's their architect. And reviewed a few of the new plans. It's changed a little bit, but the whole special permit itself really hasn't changed. Like I said, they've, one, they've got the variance, the variance will still be intact. Didn't run out. But as per code, you're, you're required to, required to review this. What the, you know, what information was told, for example, Grant Cross had an engineering report on it. And make sure that there's not any added information that you're looking for.
Right.
A couple of things. Well, one thing that, that I had for a question, which doesn't necessarily have to be taken care of here in this special permit process, but would have to be taken care of in the building permit process, would be the your, your fire apparatus.
Oh, yeah, I think that came, it came up last time. I was about to say that.
Yeah, and, and we've had this issue before with a couple of other places that are on the unique natural area or the steep slope area. So we've always been able to come up with some type of resolution with it. This is this might be a little bit more of a challenge, but I still think it's something that can be done. So I think if you do approve this, that it should have some type of condition on it that you know, the, the emergency apparatus access road be worked out with myself or the fire chief, which would naturally be done anyway, but it might be good to have that as a condition. Another aspect of this is there was in your packet, there was an easement in there for the driveway, so that is taken care of. I don't know if, if you folks have anything that you want to add, Alexander or Jeremy, Carolyn, I, do you want to add anything to this?
I can share the site plan if that would be helpful. Hello, everyone, by the way.
What did you just?
Let's share the site plan.
Oh, yeah, please.
Hold on a second.
Am I, am I allowed to share the screen?
Yeah, you should be.
In a second.
In a second, okay.
He says you're okay, good.
All right, you see it?
Can you, can you zoom in?
It's a little far off.
You guys might have, you guys
There is a copy in here, yeah.
This in our packet.
So Well, this, this, I mean, if this helps, this is the area on Google. So this, this is the lot, this is the existing structure there, and usually two existing structures. The so this is the same view north being to the left of the screen. So this is the drive. This is the part that is the easement from the neighbors. This is the existing, the existing structures on site. So this is the survey that we got from nineteen ninety-five.
Oh, that's the, that was, is that the older drive?
The existing condition as it exists. I'll show the proposed site point in a second.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, because it looks so similar to what we have, okay.
This is, this is, I see, you know, back then, clearly. So this is the easement that we have for the, for the driveway. This is the nearest, incidentally, the nearest hydrant right here at the top of the road, five hundred feet away from here. So the proposed, well, actually, so this is just a few pictures of the site, if you don't mind. So this is basically that existing fence that is there. You can see it's fairly steep. This is the existing driveway that hasn't been used since the seventies. It can be still, or at least repaired. This is that existing structure, which is, again, has not been used since the seventies in this condition. So this is, this is the proposed site plan. So this is the septic system that Tim Buehl has designed back in twenty sixteen, and actually, I think this, this area has since moved over to clear the property line. So it's a single, it's a single structure here, which basically is on peers, and the idea is to minimize excavation as much as possible for multiple reasons. First of all, it's, you know, it's a very steep slope, so we don't really want to impact natural waterways. It's also fairly impossible to bring heavy equipment there, and we don't want to disturb the wildlife or the neighbors for that there. So that's a, like I said, a fairly minimal kind of touch on the land, but so this is, so this is it. This is the single structure that we're proposing currently. Here's a close-up of the same thing, but I mean, you can kind of see it better here. And there, there is a kind of a natural shale outcrop right here, which hopefully will act, will allow enough area for covered transport for the parking. So should I, I can show, what else would you like to see?
Well, I thought, one of the things went in reading through it, originally it was a two-level. Is this considered two levels, or is that bottom area considered the basement?
Well, so here's, here's the, here's the thing. We can theoretically, this lower area, which is considered the basement, because it's all mechanicals are, and there's a workshop. We can sink it down into the ground, but again.
I'm just asking, I don't think it matters, as long as it, I don't think it matters, does it? It's just that originally, we talked about a two-level, that's all.
Right. Well, again, it's, it's still, this is, this is the primary level, which has direct access to where the bridges is a secondary level, which is also has direct access by the bridge to the site. And this is the mechanical space, sort of formerly known as a basement, which we would like to consider not burying to the ground again, with the premise of minimizing excavation.
Okay, just, I just needed clarification. I don't, do I care, Mr. Code Officer?
Special permit, for the special permit purposes, probably no. One of the things that we see is if this is, and Alex and I will will talk about this, if this is truly a three-story, does it need a sprinkler system?
Right.
Oh.
And, and because this is, this is a unique situation, because normally, if you've got a third story, you're concerned about egress, someone getting out of that third.
Oh, yeah, but if it's mechanicals, I mean.
Here, the third story is actually ground level.
Yeah.
You're automatically exiting it. So Alex and I, we have to take a look at the code and kind of decipher what is happening with this. It shouldn't affect the planning board as far as special permit. But it's something that we're going to have to look into. And the other thing, too, is technically, how much is actually underground? Where do you take the point on your surface or your finished grade to the actual height? Is it more than thirty-five feet? So we're.
Where do you measure? Yeah.
From what I've read in the, in the code, you take.
How can you say no?
Halfway point here.
Yep.
And this is thirty-five currently, to the, to the G. So this is over here.
And even the fact that if, and I, by no means am I saying that the BZI would approve anything, because I don't have a vote in anything. But your thirty-five foot maximum height, I think the intention was to not block people's view.
I would say a view shed issue because of where it's located, yeah.
Not blocking anybody's, but some squirrel on a tree.
Yeah, there's, there's, that's another thing. So there's a lot of which we would like to.
Okay, going in and back, that's why.
So, I mean, those are discussions that we'll wind up having.
Okay, so.
Building permit process.
Well, I think it's more important that they be not grounded. I don't want it sunk into the ground. I don't want the duck.
And that is, that is the beauty of this. You have much less disturbance.
Yeah, but I was just mostly curious about what that, that extra level was for. And as far as I'm concerned, that's fine.
I'm kind of curious. Brent, do you have anything you want to add to this? I mean, this is, this is right up your alley.
Is this the one that had, is it septic, is Elgin or something? Is this Elgin?
Yes, it's an Elgin system that, like I said, Tim Buehl has designed.
I want to know.
It goes, it's basically, well, he based it on the percolation tests, and also the slope ideas. It's essentially a kind of a bunker that kind of holds the effluent, so to speak.
So hang on one second, Alexander. It occurs to me that we have never actually officially opened the public hearings. This is a new thing, so I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing for special permit number, review of special permit number thirty seventy-six. Motion bypass.
Okay, we gotta go back, and everybody's gotta remember what.
So that's a, that's a motion bypass.
Second.
Second by Lisa, okay. There we go, now we, now you can continue.
So everything is now legal for the past five years.
Brad, I'm sorry, we didn't interrupt you guys. What were you talking about?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm trying to remember back when we looked at this the first time, what kind of questions I had. I didn't go back into my notes and see what, what we talked about, but you know, the road itself is, I see it says down at the bottom, pave existing stone road, so that.
Yeah, I wanted to know about that.
Is that.
The idea is to use the existing, hopefully will hit stone, but right now, it's essentially dirt. But, yeah, the idea is to use the existing bed that was once a driveway.
Right, but the paving is for just that hatched area, not hill. Or is it all hill?
No, 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 just, just, just the, just the stippled area. And again, paved, this is what I was showing you earlier, this is Tim's drawing from twenty sixteen. And that was basically for this. We, we would use the compacted gravel.
Oh, good. It's.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so it's previous.
Well, it does actually count for that, but it's, it's better. I, you know, that's not a critique, but it's just a question of, you know, all the way down, you know, is the property owner, I mean, I could, I could imagine that there's the potential for some erosion along the driveway all the way down. And also, too, whether or not, as it collects coming down, is it going to concentrate and kind of end up spilling out into that area, kind of like a open channel flow?
You mean from the, from the, from the neighbor?
Well, from all the way up top, you know, from all the way down from SD, you know, is it going to stay in a, is there ditches along the road?
Yeah, so that's, that's another reason to kind of, not to create any sort of new drives, but to use what's already there, because that, that's been there for the last, like, forty or so years, and we don't really see, I haven't seen any gal, I haven't seen any gullies on this thing. There is a natural gully right next to it, and there's kind of another one sort of here, so there, there is a kind of, then there's the, obviously, bigger one here. So there's a kind of enough flow on the, on the area that seems to not actually intercept any of this, at least from what I've seen.
Yeah, I think that's probably true. I'm just, you know, pointing out that as you utilize the road, it may become, you know, more of a worn path.
Right.
That worn path becomes more of a conduit for drainage. I'm not predicting it, I'm just pointing that out, is, you know, will it need maintenance on some kind of regular basis? And, you know, either from drainage concentration, or just simply, you know, tire, tire traffic.
Right. Well, yeah, no, I mean, we'll certainly monitor it, but now that we're sort of fairly open on site and see what else can be done or should be done. But again, the idea to not, first of all, we can't really bring heavy equipment down there, unless, you know, we cut a whole new road, which is not the idea. So the, the idea is not to, you know, to sort of tread lightly and not to bring down heavy excavators, dump trucks, or anything like that. I mean, I think we're gonna deal with fairly light pickup trucks, from what I can, from what I can at least tell, and trailers.
And so what about the, any disturbed areas? Would it be put back as lawn, or would it be kind of put back as some kind of, you know, fallow ground, or?
Well.
About that?
Right. We, again, we're gonna try not to disturb much. I mean, there is, there is already, I've showed this picture here, right, so this, this area under the existing structure is a relatively nice sort of flat zone that I think would be a good staging area once we, you know, remove the structure. And there isn't really anything else that we're sort of planning on disturbing, right? Because there's, like I said, there's an existing garage here which essentially becomes this spur turnaround. This is, again, an existing driveway with this kind of natural outcropping. So I obviously am going to have to dig ten footers for this thing. And, you know, whatever we disturb, we'll put back, but from, from what I understand, from the owners, that I'd rather have a kind of a natural sort of meadow situation than, you know, anything.
Right.
Because, you know, you can't even really maintain a decent lawn in there, because it's.
Right.
Fairly overgrown.
So I just wanted to make sure that was asked and answered. I guess, and the last topic or last question, not even a question, just observation would be is, you know, the temporary erosion control measures
Right.
that you've, that's identified on Tim's original drawing, and he did put a a double silt fence, which, that sounds good. More importantly than double, though, would just be during life of instruction, that the contractors are very respectful or, or, you know, paying attention to maintaining that erosion control measures.
Right. Yeah, no, that's definitely the plan, to bring back what, what Tim originally proposed. Then again, if you have any suggestions now, you know, it's, it's been some years, we're happy to to hear those.
I think that's all for now.
Well, Brad, we can, we can always visit the, you know, have a site inspection. As a, as a.
Sure. Yeah.
So what do we have to do now?
So generally, we do keep public hearings open for two sessions, and we just opened the public hearing to review the extension of special permit number thirty seventy-six. I just wanted to clarify that. So typically, we keep them open for a, for a second meeting, so I would suggest that we do that, and we can come back and we can make a determination on whether we want to extend a special permit or not at the next meeting. And in the interim, do you want to work with Alexander on the road and?
Yeah, I think we'll, we might as well touch base with Brad George or fire chief and see if he's got
Oh, yeah.
any suggestions, but not, not that it would, like I said, make or break the attention of this, yeah, I mean, because it's got to be settled one way or another.
It's a good time to build it on that.
But what I'll do, Alex, I'll, I'll get a hold of the fire chief and send him over some of this and see what kind of suggestions he's got, and see if we can't work out something for this. Before the next meeting, or at least have some kind of information for the next meeting. Hopefully, hopefully close things up at that point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, okay. So hopefully, we see, see somebody at the next meeting. I guess we can, if nobody's here, but.
Next meeting is July thirteenth, or?
No, June twenty-eighth.
Yeah, right.
I'm, you don't have to come. You can come to the one in, oh, July something, yeah.
Haven't thought that far ahead yet.
No, haven't either.
July eleventh.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out. Well, it may happen one way or the other.
I'll, I'll get in touch with you more likely tomorrow or Wednesday.
July eleventh is the next one after that.
Okay. July eleventh, I definitely cannot make. I have a something scheduled. I know that. But, yeah, June twelfth, I think is doable. And by the way, thank you for accommodating the Zoom situation, because we have like a child crawling around whom you do not see, but it would have been, would have been impossible for me to be there, unless I was bringing the child, which would be really complicated.
Thank you. And, yeah, we'll see you, see you hopefully at the meeting in June. Okay, so the last item now on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearing for special permit number twenty twenty-two dash forty-five seventy-five. That is the update to the existing building with improvements for the Maguire Chevy Cadillac dealership. So I don't see anyone here. We do have the seeker in front of us, we can go over that.
I think we should just do it.
I'm fine with that. Yeah, did you see the, the, the plans that Mike emailed you?
Oh, yeah. So is this for the unloading of vehicles, right? Is that, is this saying that they can't do it, or is this saying they can? Seems to me they're saying they can. No, they want to top, seems like they cannot.
It looks to me like what they're saying is, is that the truck can enter the bottom driveway and can navigate up the.
Okay.
The two, and can make, and make the curve. And then exit out.
Up top.
To uptown road?
Yeah.
Because if not, I think they should widen something.
I was gonna say, well, you can't say pull in off Cinema, unload, and then go back out that way. I know.
Oh, Brad, when's the last time you were up there? This looks good on paper.
Yeah.
I was thinking, there's a whole lot of cars parked all over the place that might make this a little bit less clean.
Yeah.
Oh, you think?
I'll use the term behind the Chevy. I know, because I've been going there for a long time. Behind the Chevy dealership, before the wall, Nissan. I don't know, it's kind of narrow for a big car haul truck.
Pretty tight unless they move.
We need to see the schematic with the cars all parked around the edges, don't we?
You have to put paint.
Because some of those are not compact cars.
Even if they are, it's.
Well, they could take out all the cars and.
Okay, also, I got a question. I mean, what's the means of enforcing this? Nothing village code that I can.
Well, maybe we need to rectify that.
I think, yeah, but that's unacceptable.
Let me ask you a question. This is a, this is a, if I parked my truck on the middle of the road, and I got out to walk down to get a coffee company to have a coffee, would somebody call the sheriffs on me? Probably, because my truck is in the middle of the road. I'm not allowed to be there. Is a unloading vehicle allowed to be in the middle of a roadway there?
It's not in the middle, is it?
It's in the roadway. Part of it, it's now, yeah, no, I mean, when they're on Cinema Drive or on Uptown, like, they're in the road.
Oh, yeah, they're in the road. You can drive around it.
Yeah, so I, but I can't still park my truck there just because you go around me.
I still don't understand why they can't pull in, unload, and back out. I don't understand that. Is it, those guys can.
I was gonna say, they're good, I mean.
They are very good at it.
I think these are good questions for somebody from. I think these are good questions for um, somebody from from Maguire.
Yeah.
To ask them.
Yeah, when they come next time, yeah.
I mean, maybe the plan that they present works. They're the ones that developed it, but I think maybe some more information on there would help put people's minds at ease because Jim is right. There are, as we all know, across that tree line, a lot of cars.
Yeah, for no stopping.
Oh. I don't know. No, there's a stop sign.
I don't want to be the no stopping.
No, no parking or no, no, no.
But again, it goes back to Mike's point. You know, who enforces it?
Yeah.
Right. It's gonna, it would be, it would be the county sheriff that would enforce it. Yeah.
Well.
And, I mean, the thing is, is to run their business, there has to be some way those cars can be on what.
And they have been grandfathered in and we've been doing this.
Yep.
But there's gotta be a solution.
Absolutely. There's, I think, yeah. And maybe this is it. So I hopefully, I guess, I don't know. Do you want to reach back out to them and or I don't know, I don't know the normal process for this, but yeah, it seems like there needs to be a little Can you reach back out to them and ask them for a little more detail that proves this is gonna work, right? Because this looks great without any cars there, but there's cars there.
Is it safe for their vehicles to have this happen?
Well, again, man.
Well, they've done that fat thing here. Maybe that's so they start to
Maybe.
Maybe it does work. Well, that one is tight. They may have to readjust something.
They still need to get me a set of plans. Uh, we did request that last meeting. Zivics as far as what the the new Cadillac area is gonna look like. And besides that, the county is asking for it also.
Oh, they are? Okay. I was gonna say, did you hear back from them ever?
Yeah, they're asking for, they've been waiting for further information.
One thing, and you may know the answer, I found somewhat confusing. Um, and I figured the next time they're here, I'd ask. You know, currently, the showroom for the Chevy and for the Cadillac, it's it's all on the same level. But yet they're referring, they're, the showroom for the Cadillac would be at the second floor and I'm puzzled is the
They're adding, they're adding a second floor over the, where the Cadillac dealership is now for like offices and car storage.
Right, okay.
But, yeah, I think, I think everything else was still kind of where it is now. Yeah, but they're definitely adding, they mentioned it last time, they're gonna put where the Cadillac showroom is, they're gonna put a second story over that.
And the other question I have, that's, I guess it's an ADA access question, is somebody who wants to access the Chevy showroom with the steps and everything, that's
He mentioned that.
difficult to do now, but if you go in the Cad, currently, you go in the Cadillac showroom, it's very easy. You just walk across foreign gates, but it, that be continuing.
He had, he addressed that last time about the ADA.
Well, we'll have to see.
At the time, he said they would have to
I think he means interior.
Oh, inside, you mean?
One level.
Oh, I don't know. Good question. Save that thought. Make a note.
Yeah.
You'll get the plans on it.
Okay.
Well.
Um, Brad?
Yeah, so um, a couple other, there's another sheet that they gave us, which was a, I guess it's a, they called it a stormwater management plan, but I I don't think that it's a stormwater management plan. I think it's just simply a drainage plan. I don't see any provisions for any kind of stormwater management. And what it also points out is a topic that Mike uh Scott had brought up last month, which is when, after the initials uh Nissan approval, which at that time it was all one law, the stormwater management uh system for the Nissan is shown on the lower part of this drawing, which I would assume is on the uh Chevy dealer land that after it got sub, it was subdivided after the the site plan or special permit review. So um, there was needs to be some, would you would think there needs to be some kind of a uh provision for the, the an easement or some kind of agreement between the two properties on how that can be maintained. And so anyway, that the two, there's two, two questions are from one drawing, which is what about the existing stormwater? And then I think that they uh we, well, I don't think that I, we asked, requested of them to provide some kind of uh additional stormwater management for the redevelopment of the Chevy site, which I don't see on this drawing.
So on this stormwater management, they don't show all the trees that, I guess they don't need to, right? They have just, they don't, they show some of them, but not all the ones that were on this one. So let's keep our eyes peeled on that one.
Um.
Lots of questions. Yeah. So, do we want to do short EAF and get it out of the way?
You know, kind of the topic that should print. Should be concerned about is stormwater discharge.
I don't think so. Those are pretty uh they're pretty vague questions.
Yeah.
The details.
Yeah, they say they're providing stormwater catch basins.
Yep.
Is that what that drawn?
Village.
I think things are
Maybe the, are the, yeah, I was gonna say, are the pink tanks on there, the the catchwater basins they're talking about adding? Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know if that's what it is. There, if you, if you Yeah, I I don't know if that's where, what that links to or not.
Exit, connect to the C D, what's the C D, catch basin. Scupper, I'm just scupper. Scuffers, I thought.
Scuffers a term is, it's a opening in a curb line that
Yeah, I always, I always think of that as like a ship's
Okay. Uh, yeah, I mean, definitely, though, we can, we can uh we can go over the seeker. Okay. Um, so uh, we'll, same, same thing as the one we did just a few minutes ago. Uh, part one, obviously, the uh information is up above. I will, I'll read through just the description of this one, since there's nobody here. We didn't really have a discussion. Um, the project includes a small addition to the Cadillac showroom to meet manufacturer size and design requirements and add a new Chevrolet entrance vestibule addition. Majority of the building will remain in place with improvements to the interior and exterior wall faces. Renovations of the building will provide new modern showroom exterior aluminum composite panels, storefront glass of the Chevrolet and Cadillac showroom. Existing or the exterior of the service area will have new insulated metal panels. Project site work entails removal of existing timber retaining wall and replacing with a stacked stone wall with landscaping. Existing asphalt with seal coat will be retained in areas where practical and provision for new asphalt parking and planning islands. Parking will be provided for customer service and king vehicle display. Um, so one, does the proposed action only involve your legislative adoption of a planned local law ordinance? Oh, did everyone actually have a, did everyone have a chance to read over this? I read it.
I did, I, before.
This one.
I have some notes in mind, so I must have.
Um, so did you, um, did anyone have any notes that they wanted to share on the answers that were filled out here?
Um.
Have you had some comments?
Of course. Again, it's number four always. So when it says occur on or adjoining or near
Yep, there is residential.
Add residential again because it's it's near the apartments and it's near the ones behind Nissan. Is that near enough?
I would say it's near.
It's also near as well, no?
Yeah.
Um, that's the only one I have there. So I know what's gonna have to happen later, which I didn't catch on that first time, suburban, I guess. Okay, um, the only other one I was wondering was oh it was number seventeen, actually. Funny, um, I, it says, will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? And it says yes. And then A, will stormwater discharges flow to adjacent properties? And I said, well, yes, if not managed. So is it, is it being managed? Is the point, and I don't know if we know that yet.
Well, a flow to adjacent property. If, the way I look at this is, if it were Nissan, yes, it would flow to adjacent property because it'll flow to the Chevy dealership.
Right.
Right.
As a Chevy dealership, it's now flowing into the stormwater system.
Right, it connects to the
Into the roadway.
It's not gonna flow to, you know, the next lot down where the Homewood Suites is. It can, and that's, that's the thing I mentioned here, is it connects to the existing stormwater supply.
So when it says properties, it's not, the road doesn't count.
And then they
Goes into the
And they address it in B.
Yep.
Yes.
He'll go into the conveyance.
I didn't catch basins. Okay. I just made, I questioned that. That's all.
Did, did you have a uh comment for fourteen also, knowing that you changed?
Oh, yes, please. Would you check suburban? Since we, I didn't ever notice that before. It's weird. The parenthesis, has that been there forever? Probably.
Yeah.
Other than that, I had no other.
Do you have anything, Pam? Do you have anything, Jim? Okay. Uh, so we can move on to part two. Again, uh, if you have any, I'll read these ones off. If you do have any comments, let me know. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit bike or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fail to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impacts, impact existing public-private water supplies? No. Public-private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in the adverse change to natural resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental human resource, environmental resources or human health? No. So we can move on to the Village of Lansing Planning Board Resolution for Seeker Review of Special Permit Number twenty twenty-two dash forty-five seventy-five, adopted on June thirteenth, twenty-two. Uh, this matter involves the consideration of the proposed action, special permit number twenty twenty-two dash forty-five seventy-five for the proposal by Maguire Chevrolet Cadillac located at thirty-five Cinema Drive, tax parcel number forty-six point one dash six dash five point one two to do just what we talked about and what they presented last time. Uh, on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, the Village of Lansing Planning Board and performing lead agency function for its independent and uncoordinated environmental review in accordance with the Article eight of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law, Seeker determined that the proposed action provided for herein is an unlisted action in accordance with Seeker. Thoroughly reviewed the short environmental assessment form and any and all other documents prepared and submitted with respect to this proposed action and its environmental review. Completed this thorough analysis of the potential relevant areas of environmental concern to determine if the proposed action may have a significant adverse impact on the environment, including the criteria identified in six, I'm not gonna read the whole thing off, and completed the short EAF. Um, so now therefore be it resolved, there's two fa, two options. Option one, we find this to be a negative declaration. Option two, we find it to be a positive declaration. So I will entertain a motion to find this a negative declaration.
I'll move that after uh planning board review of the short EAF that we find this to be a negative declaration.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Jim. All in favor? Motion carries, and then I will sign part three. All right. Taking that alone? Hang on a second. What am I signing? Uh, okay. So then, uh, again, we'll keep the public hearing over, public hearing open. We're gonna come back next time and hopefully we can get some information between now and then and um, maybe check to make sure somebody can be here next time for us to ask uh questions. I know you thought they were gonna be here tonight, so. So on to other business. Lisa, have a review of the proposed tree conservation and replacement law. So I know, uh, I know that Natalie and Lisa got a chance to throw them into the building. Um, that's really funny. I like, Lisa calls me and I pick up and she's like, oh my gosh, you picked up.
I said, no, when I dialed your phone, I said, there's not a chance in, that he's gonna answer. And guess what? It was, it was meant to be.
Um, so I know I talked to you and I know that you sent some information out, but did you want to just kind of bring everyone up to speed?
Well, so it was pretty enlightening to really go through this because we really focused on it and you start going, you know, you just start thinking about it differently. When we sit at home and we read this, it just didn't have, so we, I think we made some really good progress. Um, but you know, as, as I wrote to everybody, I think the real thing is, is golly, how does this apply to some of the situations we've been looking at? And I keep coming back to not, a couple of things. One is, I think we need a separate parking lot design. I just do, that we have to come up with something that when people do special permits or whatever they do, there's a parking lot involved. You gotta have something to give us some guidelines and but aside from that, I think the other hard part is the commercial versus residential still. And so I had, I I went back and I'm, after Natalie and I looked at this, because um, that we kept thinking, gee, how do you really do that? But I I don't, I'm, I was behind a limo walkers the other day coming out of Graham Road and they're cutting all these trees down now again on Graham Road, aren't they? Private person. And so I don't want to walk away from some sort of residential thing. But I looked at, I, and I sent everybody those links. I don't know if you had time to look at them, but you know, a lot of people or a lot of municipalities came up with tree ordinances and they had a commercial focus. And now, in the past ten years, increasingly, they're adding a residential component because it is now understood how important it is. It's just not your trees, it's our trees. And the fact that it can really make a difference to your environment. And, I mean, there's all sorts of data to show this is good for us, it's good for animals, it's good for the environment in general, it's good for your real estate values, all sorts of stuff. So, I mean, we don't need to get into that, but I am really anxious to get the commercial part of this going. And I'm wondering whether we want to just really focus on the commercial first and get that off to the trustees.
Yeah, and so I, so I chatted with Lisa and, you know, I and no, obviously, we shared some anecdotes, right? Are we more worried about, you know, somebody who wants to I'll, I'll pick a piece of property where, you know, we haven't talked about in a little while. You know, we were talking about the piece of property up by the swim club over the past couple meetings, and we've, as we've talked about the tree order, and we've discussed that a lot. Are we worried more about somebody coming there and cutting down every tree and putting up whatever they want to put up? It could be absolutely beautiful, but, you know, taking down every tree and they're, you know, us not having anything. Or are we worried about me at my house cutting down a couple of trees? I would argue that we're more concerned about, you know, the larger commercial type thing. So, well, I don't, I I don't disagree with Lisa. I think it's important village-wide to have these things, but I think the immediate thing where we're bumping up against these, where we always question people and have concerns, isn't, you know, somebody coming in saying, I'm upset that my neighbor cut down a few trees. Though it's happened, there's been some lots where it's been more of a residential thing and not commercial. But more so, these are discussions we're having as we talk about places like the swim club, or we talk about Bowmax, or we talk about, um, you know, uh, the Milcroft. That, well, not Milcroft anymore, but the Beer's property, that's what's really springing these things. And I think that that is a um, a good place to focus.
And
It's commercial.
I think, you know, if you look at some of these residential ones, some of them are pretty um reasonable. They don't say you can't. It's just if you plan to cut down more than X percentage of trees, they want you to have a apply for a permit. But I do think there have to be. I even said to Natalie, maybe what we should be looking at is that if you want to cut, just a, a a flat fee of some sort. We don't want this to be like you gotta run around and measure every darn tree on a residential property. I think when it comes to a commercial property, yeah, you can. You know, they're coming in, they know what they want to do, they know what their profit margins are, and I'm saying this needs to be part of their equation.
Yep.
And I don't feel that that's unreasonable. I think they can hire an arborist.
Absolutely.
Certified arborist, an ISA, whatever. Um, but yeah, I'm not sure that we should require that with a special permit. And I don't want everybody to be sitting here every time on an individual basis. That just doesn't work either. So I think we have to really think that, but as I said, I'm really anxious to get the commercial part through, but I do not want to lose sight of the residential because I really think it's important.
Yeah, I agree.
Um. And you know, we have this this, the subdivision of land talks about the planning board shall wherever possible establish the preservation the planning board shall wherever possible establish the preservation of all natural features. Not wherever possible, just shall, there's just some of these things where how do you, I don't get around that, but that's in our code already, you know? And I don't, I don't know, so, um, and then the street trees, but I, those were the things, I think that mostly it was the residential component.
Yeah.
And the parking lots, you just can't expect a parking lot to have a minimum tree density, I don't think, you just can't.
That's the thing.
It just really.
And that's, right, and that's why I agree, right, that is a, and we were trying to lump it all into this one, one big thing.
And I think parking lot designs, I, I said, even when Simon was here, how, I think that's a whole.
It's a whole other.
But it's really important also, because we have these huge heat islands. I mean, I get hot, hot just looking whenever I go to these, I think, oh God, you know, I don't want to go over there in the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, really. It's just, it can be avoided, some of this, and, um, I don't know. But that's, that's my two cents. But other than that, I think we should go through some of the stuff that if, we need to take the time if we can, and, and go through some of the changes that.
Yeah, and so what I would say, and this was my suggestion to, um, Lisa, when I talked to her was, I think it's best for us, and we can set a timer, you know, let's take, I don't know, twenty minutes to go through this. Um, and we'll see how far we get. What I would say though, as opposed to us trying to change language in this right now on the fly, as we go through these things, if you have questions or comments, write them down just so we can, you know, use these minutes that we have wisely to start making, to get through it.
Yeah.
Um, and then once, you know, if you do have questions or comments, you know, just send them to me and I'll compile them all and I'll get them off to Natalie and Lisa and we'll talk about it, and that way we can make some progress. So if you want to highlight stuff or however you want to do it, circle.
Well, and I would say, you know, our twenty minutes really count, just really read this before we get here.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, if you haven't had a chance to read it, obviously, but, uh, and so I don't think, I mean, it's how many pages, eight pages long? I don't think we're going to get through it all, but maybe we will, who knows?
Oh no, I think it's only two and a half hours in a day to get through it.
Look, yeah, but I mean, some of those pages are just these gigantic sections that are redlined right out. But then they go somewhere else.
They go somewhere else. Honestly, we were trying to think of, okay, what does that work exactly? We got hung up on. I got hung up on two shrubs are half a tree.
Yes, that took us a while, we were having some diagrams.
And I said, well, wait a minute, and then it has to be an even, but you, I said, you know, arithmetic and math was not my, well, I'm better at arithmetic than that. But, oh my gosh, and finally I said, we came to the, each shrub is a fourth.
Yeah.
And that just works for me, that's much easier to calculate, so, stuff like that, yeah.
Uh, no, I was just thinking, um, going through this, I don't have, I, I see that you have a color.
I printed it out.
Do you want, Mike can print a copy out for you, so?
Yeah. I don't have a color printer.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, we can have.
No, are you going to do this now, or?
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna, I want, I want to take twenty minutes to read through it and, uh, just, just while we're all here to actually, yeah. I know, he probably, he's in his office.
Which one is yours stated?
I can re-mail it to him for ease.
April? This is the previous one.
Okay, I'm emailing it to my.
Okay.
For ease of reading and tangerine.
You're gonna, oh. What the heck is that? So, oh, you don't have a color printer, because you know, the first time I tried to do this, she's called it a redline and I, I'm not seeing any red, and it's because of the track changes.
Yeah, you had it in no markup.
Oh, I had it in no markup mode, which.
Yeah.
Because I wasn't marking it.
Also, the term redline existed before color printers did.
That's true. Red pencil, edit.
I didn't know that.
I, I just.
I thought it was a mechanism of Microsoft Word.
He said everything in red pen.
Mike's gonna print a couple copies.
Oh, good.
Did you need one pad, are you good?
I got one.
Okay, so one for Jim.
Well, no, you have an old.
There, and then.
It's last week.
June.
June third?
Yeah. How can you read this?
Why is it like that service?
At least, you know what, now, now that you say that, I'm, I'm questioning that, I mean, I've, I've heard the term for a long time.
Microsoft is.
It's a negative connotation.
Redline, doesn't it?
Yeah, but color, but color, color printers haven't been common for a while, well, I guess, maybe it has been.
Define long time.
Yeah, and the nineties they weren't common.
Oh, I did not know that about the redline, yeah.
Redlining is a commercial thing where you exclude flags or.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Donald Trump was very good.
You're being recorded. Just saying. Maybe it came through muzzled.
Yeah.
Oh geez.
The first time, like, few days that I've sat down for that long, I've been able to like stand up and move.
Oh, I know, well, just you wait, you're on. I, that's a, that's an hourly occurrence. I can't sit still for very long because of that.
Ten miles, and I told Natalie, I was like, and it was so funny, I was like, you know what, this isn't that bad, I would definitely do this. You know what? In, 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 in three miles, I'll finish that sentence. I didn't want to like agree to do it, I said, I would definitely do this again, and I've also decided I'm never going to run a full mayor.
I.
Yeah, it's only thirteen more miles.
Got a car and a bike.
Yeah, I did, I did one.
Did you, really? I have a very.
I was training for a second one, and I realized I was running on a broken foot.
Oh my goodness.
On my last, my last training run.
See, yeah.
I still almost ran.
Well, that's not.
Under. After it was alright.
Yeah, how old were you at the time?
Never say I want to do this again, shoot me. Next day, I thought, no, it really wasn't. Thirty-eight.
I bike all over the place, I love it. Running, I'm not a runner, I don't run like a runner, yeah.
Not walk, you can, your walking is almost as good and it's better on your joints and it's enjoyable. And you, if you walk long enough, you can get really tired.
Yes.
Sometimes I.
Yep, one of the people, I, I saw a couple of people power walking and they were power, like legit power, they were power walking faster than I could. Uh, Jim need one, Larry need one.
I actually.
I said an extra spare just for me.
Oh.
Walking. But I don't, I don't do that, I don't think, I have to get back.
Okay.
All right.
Um, I'm sure Michael will join us, yeah, he's like, yeah, go ahead, start it up. Um, so yeah, if, do you just want to start right at the top? I know that you guys are.
Well, I guess, I mean.
Experts in. I, I would say, you know, well, I guess.
What's the best way to do it?
I, I would say, you, you had mentioned that, um, there were a couple sticking points, so maybe we start with just, um, the places that you're reading through, you had some discussion, you know, a good example is.
Well, all right.
Sequel tree and.
Well, I was gonna say, so first of all, I felt strongly, um, about this sentence, and I should have the full board. That I wanted to, um, talk about the mental and physical health, not just of, of plants and animals, but of residents, because I have read some data about that. You know, especially since we've had COVID, there are people, you know, the mental health and how being outdoors and trees is important. So I asked that we put that in. Other than that, I think the minimum tree density, was that an addition?
That was an addition because the purpose and intent mostly went to replacement and restoration of trees. And I think the real meat of this is establishing a minimum tree density. You're not necessarily always replacing.
Right. And we had that conversation, right, there might be, there might very well be times that you don't.
Yeah.
But.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, um, and I said, well, then we get down to here, where's the purpose again? But this, this part here is part of the law, which I did not understand, Natalie explained to me, the per, section one is the law part, right?
Section one is just the local law, when you pass it, it's not going to be in the code.
Yes. So this.
I understand.
Oh, okay.
Because I said.
Section one, the section one doesn't end up in the actual.
Right.
Okay, okay, it's really section two that is.
The amendments.
Okay.
Because I said, how come we restate this, it's so redundant, it's the same stuff, and, oh.
I didn't realize that, that makes so much more sense, thank you.
See what happens? So the code really begins with replacing our current chapter, our one liner, you know, that one sentence. So, some of this was just style changes, um, or word changes, like adopted instead of formed, I mean.
And I know you had also a lot of discussion about replacement versus.
Oh yes, I really struggled with replacement, I thought.
Right, because it's not always replacement, right?
No, it isn't. Um, so, then we moved into basically establishing the format like the A, B, C, and the sub-ones and what all. Um, most of this was the same language as before, like the removal of more than twenty-five percent of trees from any tax parcels. And that would be something that maybe you'd be able to keep in residential as well. But, um, so, you know, keep that in mind, but now for sure. And, um, then it moved into the fact of the tree bank, and then the compliance shall be determined by the current market cost, um, determined by the Department of Public Works, blah, blah, minimum tree density, that's all remain the same, I think.
That remained the same, it's just a matter of changing the formatting a little bit. And we also added there any.
I was gonna say, actually, it was the word major subdivision. Because what, how does it, how does it work? Like, we were talking about the, like, the one that just occurred over on Trip Hammer. But, uh, uh, yeah, Trip Hammer.
Wasn't, no, it was one of the.
Offshoots.
The orangey, orangey.
Yeah, that's on, that's on Trip Hammer, oh yeah, that is on.
It is on Trip Hammer.
That was a minor.
Yeah, that was a minor. And would we then require a minimum tree?
As it was written, the orange bees would have had to.
Right.
And that's, but, and yet on the other hand, I keep thinking about the one down here on, um, Dart Drive, was a minor subdivision, of course, he'd already clear cut.
Yeah.
And I assume that he's sort of segmenting, I wouldn't be, and I don't know how you stop that.
But after you get to four, Mike, you'll know, it then becomes.
Then it's a major subdivision.
And then he'll just have to replace back any trees that he's.
Three to your span.
Yes.
But you also have the twenty-five percent rule.
Right.
Right.
So if this was in place, I don't know if he cut down twenty-five percent of the trees that were there, or.
That's what enforcement's going to be hard on.
Yeah.
That's why I think we were talking about perhaps the flat fee for residential removals. Because I don't know how Mike's going to keep track of.
Yeah, given the current situation, not that in the future, we could expand and have seventeen staff or something, but, um, right now, we don't have the capability of enforcement.
Be the tree chef.
I mean, you, you don't, I'd almost have to go around and take at least a photo of vacant lots at this point. Because when you're talking about not more than twenty-five percent, you know, some guy's got three trees a year, he cuts out one, he just cut down thirteen.
Yeah, now I know.
You're, you're, I'm assuming you're not concerned about, you're more concerned about the actual vacant lots, residential lots that are left.
Well, yeah, I just, I don't like the clear cutting is what, you know, this, this whole started because number one, with the Maguire, where they couldn't plant trees that we wanted, and he said, you know, maybe a tree bank. And then, I, I was gonna say, and, and the clear cutting that, um, he did down there on Dart Drive was, I mean, you know, the neighbors were pretty concerned about that. Trees. I, I, I think that some of it has to do with how large.
I'd take some photos now of areas that are developable. It, it, it's doable.
Okay.
When the village isn't that big, there's not that many areas that you can actually.
I mean, you know.
Into a major subdivision.
Right.
You know?
No, I think we've talked about the one, the only other one would be, Horowitz is properly here would be. And, I mean, given that he still owns it, I think he is more respectful of some of those things, but you know, it's all, depends on who owns it at the time.
Yeah.
So you want.
Well, you were having the discussion about, um, residential versus commercial versus parking lot, I know there's a parking lot section in here. Um, did you, did you discuss how you would identify like a, a residential versus a?
Commercial?
Commercial. Would it be like, how it's, a parking lot, I guess, but like, would it be like how it was zoned versus? Like, if we're saying, we really want to get something out there to the trustees to talk about for commercial properties?
I think the commercial properties relates more to the minimum tree density section.
Okay.
Anything that's.
Okay.
A subdivision is a special permit.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and then, and that's, that's, when you change that language, or that's what that was meant to?
Yes.
And major subdivision.
So it's really that major subdivision or special permit, right? It's not going to apply to me if I go cut a tree down.
Exactly.
Special permit, okay.
Well, minus the twenty-five percent.
Minus the twenty-five percent, right?
Yeah, I mean, as far as definition between them, there's the state definition, residential as a, uh, sleeping area. Is classified as. It's not, no quote, I don't quote any, I didn't say it verbatim, but it has, that's what.
Mike said, it's too late, it's under. Well, at any rate, no, okay, that, that was just a question that I had, I didn't want to, okay.
Okay, um, so.
Kept all of the language in, I think we divided it a little bit to make.
That's right, I think I said, you know what, whenever there was a different thought, I'm, I'm a proponent of one thought per line and per thing, so that if somebody's reading this, they can understand how many things they need to adhere to, do you know what I mean? So.
There's also a little space between those.
Yeah.
That might be by, oh, like space it out?
Yeah.
Oh, the.
I don't know how the code is, right? That's out of my pur.
And it wouldn't be underlined so that it helps, but yeah, you mean, put a space.
That's all that.
I agree.
Mike's like, Mike's like, yeah, not me.
And then what, on page three, we just got, oh, the tree unit value.
That was my, is that under section?
Our individual trees will be determined from table one, located in appendix H, which we don't have here, right?
Correct.
But we gotta get that attached here so we can all refer to it.
I love reading this, by the way.
Huh?
This was my favorite part. The four shrubs.
Wait a minute, so wait a minute, we aren't there yet, are we?
The four shrubs there.
Okay, yeah, I want.
It's defined above.
Depth at breast height.
At diameter breast height.
Diameter breast height.
Oh, I've never seen that term.
It's very, it's a.
There it is, okay, C one, alright.
It's, we did, we did, we did it right, but that will also be in the definitions at the beginning of the code. So, let's see, the tree planting conforming to the, that was just basically style.
Yeah, I don't think.
Uh, scale the site plan, showing all that stuff.
I think the general conditions for tree planting plan.
Yeah. Then we get to the general conditions for tree planting.
Where it makes some. Impossible to judge.
All replacement trees shall have a caliper size of no less than two inches. Tree unit value of existing trees will be measured by DBH as determined by an ISA certified arborist hired by the developer.
Yep.
Um, for, yeah, here's your favorite part, maybe you want to read this. Okay, four shrubs of a minimum two gallon size may be counted as one tree unit. Tree units attributed shrubs will be rounded down to the lowest half number. Got it?
Got it.
For example, seven shrubs will be counted as one and one-half tree units, as opposed to one and three-quarters.
Any Mighty Python fans?
Well, you know, I, how do we do this? I mean, it is, it's.
You know, somebody will come and do it and I'll be like, hey, round it up to three. No, no, yep, no, that's good.
Is, is that clear, though?
Yeah.
It is?
I got it. I understand.
I did, I, I, I share, I found the struggle, because, see, this way I can multiply, you know, point two-five times, and get one point seven.
It was, it was happened before, yeah, so. You're trying to do the rounding, it's, yeah.
Yes, the rounding was harder, because you get to one point seven five and say, oh, down I go. Okay, so that was a major breakthrough as far as I was concerned. Um, and then we just broke it up into sections here, um, if more than trees, da, 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 da.
It gets a little in the weeds.
Oh, but did we get into this or how it should be different types of trees?
We started talking about how.
Devote disease.
Yeah, the genius was, I was fine with, the one that I took umbrage with is F, but I think that's where it get a little, yeah, the new F, where it gets a little dense.
At least twenty-five percent of replacement trees shall be un, oh.
Understory, overstory.
That's right, we kind of by now were kind of getting run down a little and it started to get, and I said, I think we're done, we were just getting overdone. Actually, I mean, really, but what do you think about the understory and overstory?
Let's just look at the three requirements listed in the new DE and A. If more than three trees are required to be planted, no more than a third may be one genius unless permitted. Trees must be planted to achieve maximum canopy coverage at mature size and shall avoid excess overlapping canopy coverage. And then at least twenty-five percent of replacement trees shall be understory, at least twenty-five percent shall be overstory. And then it goes on after that to be deciduous versus evergreen.
I know, and so I I remember, okay, so I I really don't have trouble with the actually so much because often people will plant their trees so close together and then when they start to mature, they die off because especially if they're evergreens and you see that a lot, you know, and I don't have trouble with that to achieve maximum canopy coverage at mature size and avoid, but the understory, overstory, I was wondering whether we might want to get into something a little more generic about a mix of understory and overstory. Whoops. Kind of thing, that's the fire truck, right?
Yeah.
Or ambulance.
Not coming here.
I don't know, to me, it seemed.
I don't know.
In the nitty gritty, but maybe that's what we're looking for.
Well, so that's a good thing, you know, if you have thoughts about that, email me after.
Yeah, I was gonna say, why don't.
Consolidate them and send them off because I have thoughts on it too, so.
And then the next one, at least twenty-five percent of new trees, new trees shall be evergreen and twenty-five percent shall be deciduous. So a mix, and I think Jim, you had brought that up when we were talking to probably Eric or somebody about couldn't you mix so it's not all this, just this row of the same thing and everything.
Yeah, I and I don't know whether I'm becoming more sensitive to it, but it just seems like more and more that just, I'm thinking, not around here, but in Northeast Ohio, driving around seeing new developments where they just build mounds which interfere with your enjoyment of driving and then just plant a bunch of evergreen, it looks very.
It's pine trees.
Very, very artificial and it's boring and it now is actually ugly, whereas you look at a pine forest and you know, the North Country of the Pacific Northwest, it's beautiful. It's not the same and it's very, looks very, I won't say haphazard, but just a cheap, cheap and not well thought out.
What about I?
We omitted a part there where it said, any new trees shall be of the same or similar species of those trees that were removed, maybe necessarily the case that you want.
Yeah, I have trees on my property that I wouldn't want replaced because they don't thrive. That somebody footed them, I find that the red maples do not do well. And 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 it would, I would not want to replace it with them.
This just gives more of an option, I mean, they very well may want to replace them with the same trees.
It's possible, new trees shall be ecologically compatible with the site. Do we want to say anything about, okay, maybe just.
So what does that mean?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Would that mean, for example, you don't, I mean, they they wouldn't live, but you don't plant palm trees in the village of Lansing.
Don't want a non-native invasive.
That's what I was, I just picked an extreme.
I thought that was mentioned somewhere else with invasive, wasn't it?
Well, things can be non-native but not invade, but not invasive.
Well, for example, yeah, actually.
Doesn't the planting plan have to be?
Approved.
Yeah, in that list, yeah.
Oh, yeah, this is desirable trees.
Regulated invasive plant list shall not be used to acquire density.
Ecologically compatible with the site. So.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I guess, at any rate, not to, not to, you know, try to wordsmith it and solve it here, but yeah. I guess I could see that differing from, you know, the DEC prohibited regulated invasive species.
Ecologically inconsistent and invasive or.
Exactly, that's my point, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the whole plan, if you look at, where am I, C two. Prior to submission, this plan must be approved by an ISA certified arborist to ensure that planted trees have the best chances surviving and thriving in the given conditions. So that kind of already takes care of the idea.
Yeah.
That they must ecologically compatible. If an ISA certified arborist commercial already have looked at it and approved it.
Do we cite the ISA arborist again?
Or is it just duplicative to have it there?
I don't know.
Could we be sure that an ISA, that a certified arborist would would not sign off and say trees that are not, I'll I'll use the example, non-native or not really appropriate for this this climate or this climate zone, I mean. I don't know.
Well, you know, but there are some, honestly, there are some things too that I think Norway spruce are really not considered desirable, really. I think they're on one of the lists and yet I think it's Norway spruce.
I don't know, what it, what does, what do they look like?
Well, it's.
Are they blue?
My, pardon, huh?
Are they the blue spruce?
No, no, blue spruce or blue spruce, maybe it's a con, mine's a con color for, at any rate, some of these, but they they work well here and they will grow and some things just won't grow here because it's very droughty and and we were talking about, I said, I have trouble growing big trees in certain parts of my yard because I don't have enough dirt, it's shale, barely covered with dirt, you know, and I try, I've lost a lot, I've spent a fair amount of money trying to grow some trees that they just wouldn't grow. Um they get to a certain size and they just can't keep going.
Yeah, and I don't know, I mean, these, what I'm calling is sort of fake-looking evergreen trees, I don't know if they're pine trees and I try, in the last couple of weeks, I actually tried to look as I was driving around, try to figure out whether whether it was a pine tree or something else, it was an evergreen tree that planted just to be a natural growing fence.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Those kind of trees.
Well, maybe this is okay, but I guess, so this area, I think everybody really should look hard at and really give it some thought. What do you think?
Which sec, are you looking at what, subsection three?
Three.
I'm looking, yeah, this whole thing, just be sure that.
General conditions, okay.
Yeah, the general conditions.
We don't have any Christmas tree farmers in the village of Lansing doing, it's really gonna impact, they're cutting down to twenty-five percent. Add it into the ground and.
Oh, geez. Oh, yeah, actually, which reminds me, street, oh, street, and then we get into the street. Again, you see, this is a res, not a residential thing, really. It it's a, it's not a residential thing, so so much of this really doesn't work and I think we just need a separate section.
Yeah.
That's residential, this is, I don't know.
And a lot of you, right, you might be able to, you know, you know, this this commercial thing that we're gonna, is gonna be more, I don't want to say restricted, but it's gonna be more developed and you can, of that, right, you know, we're not gonna.
Like, yeah.
You know, the the understory and overstory for my house might be a bit much if I.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, I've never heard those terms before I saw them in this document.
Oh, really? Oh, there's, I I read a book, Overstory, that I loved and most people.
We're required to read it for next meeting.
The book club, yeah, no.
Really liked it.
Anyway, street trees.
Part around the front lot line, blah, 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 did we get into trouble with um corner lot, no, kind of street planted the right of way, I think all of that was pretty okay. And may, and street trees may be counted as the required minimum, however, they must still meet the street tree requirements even if, so this is all commercial.
Yeah.
And that works for me.
Yeah.
And then parking lot, we, that's about where we basically said, I think we're done now, so. Thinking about our parking lot, you can see that this just isn't gonna, and I I honestly don't want the parking lot thing to be punitive in such a way, I really would like them to make some changes with the parking lot that are reasonable and I know there's, you know, issues with snow plowing or you put them all the, but you know, I don't want that to stop us from getting some trees in our parking lots.
Right, we've been talking about, you know, there's the tree bank and that comes later, right, you're not gonna always be able to do this stuff, okay, you can get, you know, you come to the planning board, we'll talk about it, you know, they have, what, I forget what you called it, but you know, the I'm gonna say the prevailing current, yes, or current market cost, I was gonna say the prevailing cost of a tree, but I mean, maybe there's an opportunity there to work with developers, you know, if, you know, one of our. Beautiful, right, we've got a few big parking lots right here, um you know, maybe there's a way that we can, you know, somehow utilize money from the tree bank to help.
Yeah, no, I mean.
You know, you know, if, you know, if if it was residential and I said, nah, I don't want to spend five hundred dollars to put a tree in the middle of my driveway and you said, I bet five hundred dollars for you to put a tree in the middle of your driveway? Hmm, okay, well, maybe, not that I'm saying we pay for the, you know, the parking lot fix, but there might be some options in there to help or to, you know, almost like a grant to sort of do things, no different than the the fund that we have here, right? Do we have that where if I buy a tree, I can get up to so much back if it's meets the requirements of, yeah, I mean, so very similar to that, but maybe for parking lots, something to think about as we move into into more of a parking lot type discussion with the tree bank.
So then um we get into the parking lot and I I think it would be helpful if we have a separate section.
Yes.
But you know, that doesn't mean they're on smaller parking lots, I suppose, that.
Yeah.
But you know, we do have the required number and then we've got to work with that too, you can't just say, well, you need X number of trees and then there's no room for them. So I don't know how that works, you know, some, just from a practical standpoint, how does that work?
So we are at time.
Okay, that's fine, and this is the place because, yeah, we really.
So we all got to parking lot trees and we also.
That's right.
Which is actually good because really the last, I mean, a couple of pages of this is just Natalie deleting stuff. And that's all my last, that's all my last few pages say, look at that.
Oh, and you know, but seriously, do reads, I don't know if you did, but do read some, I printed them out um to the the residential stuff because some of them have some.
Very inventive ideas or thoughts in there was.
I I tried to pick ones that I thought were reasonable.
Yeah.
That have some good ideas, but like, it is true, one of the things I would love to see selfishly is that if your neighbor has dead trees right near your property line and they fall on your property, which happens, and it wrecks your fence, they should be liable.
I I happened to one of my friends in Q, I had somebody, a tree on their their neighbor's lot, they said, hey, that thing's gonna, it's dead and it's leaning and it's gonna fall, it fell. It broke them and that, I mean, I think they ended up having to take a small claims court, but they won, they won and they were like, you owe, you have to pay to replace it.
Yeah, but maybe we would put that in a.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, something like that, but no, well, good. Okay, so after we're done with it, so we can, we need to finish this.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. It's, so what I'll say is if you have thoughts, um by the end of the week, get them to me, Lisa, do you want to meet next week, me and you?
I'm going away.
We can meet over Zoom.
Yeah, we could.
Yes, that would be good.
We could be fine.
Okay.
You want to send me an invite?
Yeah, I'll do something.
Thank you.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, so try to get thoughts to me by the end of the week, I'll meet with Lisa next week and maybe whatever we have, we'll send to you and we can maybe get something hammered out to.
I got a print. So I can see what it really.
I'll send it out in clean.
Oh, could you?
And red line.
I, because I I find it hard to sort of see the format and, yeah, no, that's about.
Um, okay, so the next item on the agenda is the continued discussion on code updates.
This is red line, but I'm used to seeing red line documents with the stuff taken out, still in the text with the line through it.
Some of that's on, I thought some of that was on here.
No, it's on the right, I think you have comments.
Oh, yeah.
Three has it, yeah.
Yeah.
So there somewhere.
She she deleted three, on page three, she deleted all sorts of stuff and it shows up later somewhere.
Different versus what Mike printed off than what's here, so.
Really?
Sure, it is, yeah, if if you, yeah, the one online is literally red lined out, it's still there, just it's it's struck through, yeah. The printed off copy, yeah, it's.
Okay, never, never mind.
So, yes.
How could that happen? I don't like that.
Technology, we need, says the IT director. Uh so the continued discussion on the code update.
Where are we at with um when people don't fulfill their conditions on their special permit and we pull their bill? Are we anywhere?
I've still got, I've got quite a few irons in the fire because I've spent some time because I opened my big mouth last meeting about subdivision.
Oh, yes.
Up and down.
Yes.
And there's quite a little bit of work there, so I'm.
Oh, you told me it was gonna be real easy and I said, I don't want you to spend a lot of time, but now I do. Yes, now you told me you could do it and I really want to know the extent of this, actually.
It's, you know, you take each property and you figure out, okay, what can you, what can they divide in and still be compliant?
We're talking about subdivision, uh once a sewer goes in, Larry.
Usually, I thought maybe I just go through, so, oh, yeah, boom, boom, and I go, oh, went to the first property and I was like, oh, wait a minute, they get three lots off of that.
Oh, but you know, I think this is worth it, however long it takes, and maybe you can't do it right away, but. I think as a village, we need to know this.
Gonna add a little bit as you can.
This is not unimportant, I mean, look at, we're talking here with the mall and we're worried about sewer units. This impacts sewer units as well as all sorts of things.
Yeah.
Services that we need to provide.
It would be, it would be an interesting number, it's because it's got my curiosity up too.
Oh, good, well, I'm good, I won't need to remind him now. I got him, hooked him. I mean, or is this something we just have Natalie knock it out, why don't we just have her do that?
Natalie knock it out?
Yes.
Just have Natalie knock it out.
It's gonna be easy for Mike.
The subdivision stuff over to Natalie.
Well, seriously, though.
Yeah, I can knock it out.
Because I think we could just whip that, those two off, you know, the subdivision and the the how, the cleaning up, like what it means to have.
Still got that.
Additional, yeah, plat.
You still got the list of what we were up to do.
Yeah, somewhere on my computer.
Why not?
Joke about while you're out there counting, like you're actually gonna go there and take some pictures of trees too.
Yeah, get your tree count.
Three lots. There you go.
Okay, special permit.
Okay.
I have something I want to ask before, but it doesn't have to be on the record necessarily, but maybe it's in other business.
I was gonna say, okay, no, it's under.
Okay.
Other business.
I, every time I go to the post office, I go through Lansing Trails and down by Bowman and I see that ten-foot sidewalk section that is gravel between Johnson's thing and why? And what is the explanation for that, or is this some sort of contest of sorts?
This Greenways committee has been trying to deal with that and I think it has to do with the fire height there. They think the fire department has to deal with that slope going to. Are you talking about from where you go from east point down to?
There's a sidewalk, up the go, the concrete sidewalk and turns into stone gravel and then asphalt starts up.
Space asphalt, I I think you, some of what you're saying is correct, but some of the other of it is when when Larry Fabroni designed that sidewalk, put it in his pavement, there was a big trade-off that the village was not going to pull that pavement out and extend that concrete sidewalk all the way down to the corner.
Well, so when are we going to do that, it looks dangerous to me, if somebody were to come along or like a kid on a tricycle or something, I think it's dangerous. Every time I go, I think, oh, I wonder who owns that.
I understand, but it was a few times that I was gonna ask John Courtney, didn't look like he was in the mood for me to ask him that. Figured I am.
No. So, Brett, I didn't realize you were back, hey.
I will ask him.
I just think. Brent?
Yeah, it that, I believe that the village owns that uh section of land.
See, that's what concerns me, I shouldn't, I mean, it does concern me actually because I think it could be a problem.
That was put in and then, if you remember Brett, remember her up there, we were supposed to get an easement for the sewer in between the two buildings.
How could we forget?
And that was all part of that deal that I'm not so sure it even, has even happened.
Yes, no, no, uh I think it.
Was thinking it did.
It did, it did, no, it was a big deal, isn't that the one we got into a real?
But we were going, we were going to take care, it had something to do also with those trees behind.
Yeah, the trees were planted along there.
I know for sure that now the village is responsible for that paved area to extend that.
Okay, gee.
But you're correct, there is a, there is a hydrant there.
Maybe they could. Maybe they could just fill it in with some gravel, I, I'm just talking about, it kind of drops off and stuff, I'm just thinking, I don't know, it just looks kind of.
Thanks, Brett.
Not safe, that's all, and I was wondering why, as it, because. Get some, um, order up a thing, a sack, bring it on over.
Hey, Brett, you gotta, you gotta go to bed or something, go ahead, dude.
No, I'm, I'm a late night, I'm a late nighter.
Yeah.
Remember, remember two, remember Tuesdays are my, my date.
We haven't forgotten. I was not gonna bring up that whole time.
Okay.
I've got a couple of things, and well, Brett, you're right there with, uh, today, um, is his name Mike Bosic?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, Mike Bosic, he's from Host Compliance.
Oh, sat down here.
About the SD, about short-term rentals.
Uh-oh.
Um, they have a system or an organization where they can help you one, find the short-term rentals and two, manage them and give you ideas on how to, uh, be able to monitor them.
Yeah.
And I asked him, um, offline in the chat if he'd be interested in coming to the planning board to.
Talk to us.
Talk to you guys, and he said, sure, anytime.
You know, after tonight's presentations, I realize I still would like to see people face-to-face in some situations, um, probably not, especially if we're gonna have a working relationship with them for a long time, what do you think? But, was, he's talking about Zoom call, where is he?
Uh, we didn't mention what it was, I just asked if he'd do a presentation for the planning board.
I think it would be great.
I think so too, yeah, absolutely.
I pulled out my short-term rental folder, but, um, wasn't sure, yeah, I mean, I feel like I really want to finish the tree ordinance.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I want to get the commercial piece off and I would love to get those other two little things off, and let's start there, just because I think we could maybe have an immediate need for those things.
I'd like to get back to short-term rental after that.
But then I, I can.
We put, Carolyn specifically, we put a lot of work into that.
And.
We have more information now with what's, you know, been passed this area.
There's a lot, again, a lot of possibilities there, and we all have something that we are worried about.
Yep.
And, um, and then after that, speaking of a lot of work that Carolyn's put in, is this solar.
Yeah.
Day language.
Yeah, you get hope for the sharp.
I was gonna say, everybody's anxious to do that one, and it, I don't know, I don't know enough about, but, you know, we worked, Carolyn and I and Tony worked on that. And when we got into some of this kilowatt, um, it was very complicated, in fact, even Tony said, you know, I've got to be sure that I've, that's right, I, it was really, I mean, I'm, I'm not qualified to know if this is right.
Carolyn mentioned at the last board meeting that it may already be outdated.
Probably, this is the other thing.
Yeah.
Um, but again, and then there were the, you know, but there were some really important things here, there were the different tiers and residential versus non-residential, which is, I think the residential is probably more pertinent, and this one, in the commercial, or not, who knows?
Well, we can look at the unified solar permit also, it's outdated.
Well, yeah, so I, I agree though, I think, right, we finished the tree conservation law, there's a couple of things that are smaller, just.
Just have Natalie knock off.
Uh, and then, right, we can, we can figure out what we're gonna tackle next, whether it's short-term rental or both, whatever.
But we have to not let all these other things get.
Yeah, no, I agree, but I think, like, we're definitely making segue on the, or headway on the, uh, on the tree, let's finish that and then move on. Well, we hear, I think there's, I think, before we've done this and then we've gotten something done and then had a lull, we shouldn't have a lull, like, we've got our normal things to do here, and then I think we should also always be working on one of these things, always be one of these things, so, okay.
We have to chip away, we just have to.
Did you have Mike, uh, the, next time, next time you might have a, uh, citizens' bank coming here before going into Tops.
Going into Tops?
They had a citizens' banks, they had a citizens' bank at the one downtown.
Oh.
Outclosed.
Was one up here?
There was, and then it turned into the pharmacy, but now that there's only one Tops.
So how are the, where are they gonna go?
Where the, well, I can.
Guess where?
I told Mike, you know where the bottle return places are there? Well, they've been doing an awful lot of construction there. They're saying.
Oh, really?
That's the dust and caution tape and guys hauling crap out of there, oh, yeah.
Yeah, outdoors?
No, inside, no, there's, there's like that kind of glass enclosure before you actually go into the area, in between that, there's that bottle redemption piece.
Slapped off.
The machine's all outside, the sheets are all outside now.
No.
Yes, I know where I'll be.
Oh, I never come in that way, I come in by the glass doors that have the teddy bears and the machine for the nickel or whatever, I.
Hey, Mike, uh, I hear Tops is open till midnight. Um, okay. Um, any?
Okay.
I don't have anything else at this point.
Jim, trustee report?
Okay. We did an audible roll call, um, approved two sets of minutes, they approved local law D, which was regarding the video conferencing for public meetings, opened a hearing and local law D, there were some questions from, from a member of the public, Kathy, I don't know her last name. And voted to close the public hearing and then unanimously voted to approve local law six, um, which is the video conferencing. There was a consideration of expansion of a sanitary district that was on the agenda, John Courtney asked that it be removed from the agenda, per, a true liability, I think somebody wasn't present. Then there was, then there was discussion, because under the local law D for video conferencing, there was a reference to, um, it would be administered in accordance with procedures for using the law, you know, as determined by the Board of Trustees. So they talked about that briefly and then, and, and again, the text of the law and the text of these procedures are set, were set forth in the agenda to the Board of Trustees meeting. So then they quickly voted to approve the procedures for implementing the video conferencing law, which it looked to me, and I, it had been a couple, a while back since I looked at the state law, but it looked like it just tracked the statutory language, although some of us were the understanding that they might and did have the power to do something different.
Yes, we did.
At least as of this point, they did not. Then there was some discussion about Greenway Plan revisions, um, there was discussion about, apparently, the catering facility, which had been before this board a couple of years ago, where they wanted to have the parking lot across.
Yeah.
Apparently, they, it must have been a COVID casualty.
Oh, yeah, it's a.
Went out of business and it was sold, I think.
Yeah.
It's been sold.
Because Beak, I think it's the Beacon Hill Catering Facility, and they asked for a waiver of the 30-day advance notice requirement for getting a liquor license for catered events. And then the last thing is there will be no meeting on June 20th, because that's the day after the Juneteenth federal holiday, which falls on a Sunday. So there will be a meeting this Thursday, um, the noon meeting, um, I don't know if I'll come or not, I might.
They're interesting, and you're allowed to, I think.
Oh, yeah, I know that, I know that. The trustees liaison.
Meeting essentially, isn't it, really?
The June, the third, the meeting's on Thursdays, so.
I think there's.
Like a staff meeting.
So I might.
Okay.
I didn't get any of this right, Natalie, feel free to correct.
Yeah, I'll just expand on the video conferencing law, so the question that was asked, um, by the member of the public was whether people, whether a quorum had to be had in person in order for voting, uh, video attendee to happen, and that's have an in-person quorum in order for a video attendee to vote. So long as that is the case, anyone attending video, video conference can vote and participate in the meeting. The procedures for using the video conferencing law were, in the case of a disability, an illness, caregiving responsibilities, or other significant or unexpected factors or events. And that can be changed anytime by resolution, uh, but they just kept with what was already in state statute.
When you say changed by a resolution, do you mean change on a permanent basis or on ad hoc basis, that a particular member has, say, a particular situation, and then there's a resolution to allow that member to remotely attend a particular meeting, or would this be?
I think it changed on broad, not an ad hoc basis, uh, that the Board of Trustees would have to change the procedures for use. But I think the categories in which they can use are, like, fraud and open to interpretation.
I don't disagree.
Particularly the other compelling reasons.
Yeah.
There's all, sounds like there's a lot of, I'll make a room there, but.
I could see that possibly it would be, well, first of all, I think that allowing this to happen, like, say, somebody who does work or travel, I mean, I think it would make it easier for us to get people to be involved if they knew because they were out of town that they could still participate, knowing we had a quorum, I think, that, I, I don't know if that falls under that.
Or even people with young families.
Exactly.
Caregiving.
Yeah, but I think to your point, I think you mentioned it last time, like, it's just not supposed to be a regular.
Right, you should.
It's not like, this is what you're going to always do.
I'm always going to.
Yes.
Be remotely.
And I, you know, I didn't, I was even thinking that maybe they would say not to exceed 10 times a year, or, you know, I mean.
Or like nine, or something, yeah.
You know, no more than, you know, once every two months or something, or, or yearly, whatever, but, um, if you feel this.
I don't have many ideas, Lisa.
I know, I know. Okay, all right, so, um.
I think we're good, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, I mean, the question, you know, one question that came up with, you know, discussion, what if somebody, say, has a doctor's appointment out of state, or, you know, wouldn't, you know, like, the, the doctor's appointment's 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, so you can't really be five hours away.
I read that as perfect.
I think that's a significant factor.
And just because you went a month before.
Unless you bring a shrubbery. Shrubberries.
I was gonna say, how many does that count, like, how many trees? All right.
Um, so I will be here for the next meeting, Pat, you'll be here for the next meeting, physically here, you'll physically be here, you will physically not be here.
Or some, no, I will not be.
Yes. Yes.
As long, I'm, I'm glad to know.
Maybe.
No.
Um.
Do we have, I'm sorry, for longer than you have. I need candidates for.
That's what I was gonna bring up, thank you, is. Keep, keep an eye out for planning board members.
Yes, we do need to.
Did we lose Laura?
No, I'll tell you.
Yeah, just time, timing wise.
Yeah, timing, yeah.
She's so interested at the time.
Yes, she is, very much so, it hasn't been the, um, situation.
Uh, okay, anything else?
Did you say there was a, was there another person?
You know, she hasn't been responding to some of our inquiries, so I think maybe she's fallen off the.
But we'll see, she might get back to me still.
It's like me, sometimes it takes a while to respond to you.
Sometimes it takes a while for me to respond, but.
Could be having an unexpected event, yes.
Okay.
Be away.
Any, any final thoughts, Pat? Lisa?
Nope, nope.
Mike?
Nope.
I will entertain a motion.
Yeah.
I'll move that we adjourn.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Hi, at 9:46 PM.
Well, last time we got.
We got out early, right?